Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Nesta.
I'll definitely review it, thank you. You're welcome.
It was today. Called July sixteenth city council meeting to order. Need to read the decorum statement. Decorum statement says, "Welcome to the public meeting of the city council of the city of Apopka. Please turn off all cell phones or set them to silent. The city council permits and encourages input and comments by members of the public on all matters which may come before the council for action. If you wish to address the council this afternoon, evening, please make sure you have filled out a card with your contact information and have presented to the clerk. When called upon, please proceed to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone stating your name, address of record, organization if any, and direct your comments to the city council and not to individual commissioners, staff, or members of the public. The council and the city staff encourages constructive criticism, however, personal attacks are prohibited. Please observe general rules of decorum and civility. Speakers and members of the audience shall refrain from rude and derogatory remarks, shouting, disruptions, reflections as to the integrity, slander, abusive comments, profanity, vulgarities, and statements as to personalities. Any violations of these provisions may result in the issuance of verbal warming, including warning for trespass. If violations persist after such warnings, violators may be removed from the council chambers." And with that, Susan, public comment.
Nikki McGuire, Naomi Kids. Good evening, commissioners, mayor, everyone in their rightful place. Just want to first of all, thank the community, those who have shown support. As many of you know, Naomi Kids has been in the community going on. This year marks eleven years. This year, we have reached out and we are still reaching out to raise funds for July twenty-sixth to give, to do a back-to-school clothes shopping, not school supplies shopping at Ross for the kids. So the kids will go and do their shopping. They will pick the clothes they need for back-to-school and then we will pay. So we're still reaching out to the community for gift cards for Ross stores. As of right now, thank you to those who have contributed. We have met ten kids. Our goal was twenty-five kids. Right now, we are at ten kids. So please note, if anybody's interested, you can call Naomi Kids at four zero seven eight eight three five five eight five. Or you can stop by at seven four three South Central Avenue, between Seventh and Eighth Street here in Apopka. We are there from roughly seven AM to six PM, Monday through Friday. Thank you, have a great day.
Leroy Bell. On the last meeting night, the minutes was taken down and they were just changed before this meeting. My comments were changed and they weren't for verbatim. That would be fine, but the gist of it would have been fine. And, but they changed it. They changed it and it changed it to my opinion and my thoughts. But I like to quote Dr. King. "I want to get the language straight tonight." This meeting, the CRE meeting, just wrapped up. The chair mentioned something about a program that you were talking about that the people of the homeowners, or even if you rented, you were the renter and you had rental property that you could get your property fixed up. And the chair had a problem.
You need to, you need to address the whole council.
But this is my, this is my public comment and that's what I'm, that's what I'm talking, this administration.
No, you got to talk to the whole council.
Well, I'm talking to the whole council. We were just sitting and you just said you didn't, you didn't want the program because you didn't want citizens sucking, just coming up, just sucking off the money from the grants. But to get the language straight tonight, you don't have any problem with the fodder cutorium, economic cutorium coming up here with their hands out. You don't have a problem with the ministerial lines coming in here with their hand now. You don't have a problem with that at all. You know, it's a shame that our city is going to waste. And it's saying that I don't care about our city. It's disrespect to the citizens when they get up here and speak. But yet and still, you want to talk about decorum. When somebody come up and give a public comment, this council have gave you the power to go back and change it. This was wrong with this city. And the sad part about it is this. We got an election coming up and so far, there's only two peoples out there. Instead of you guys doing something right, you guys got the news always in here trying to campaign and you ain't doing nothing for the citizens. And just like I would say, I'll change this. I would call a bunch of y'all the clown show. But I decided not to do that because I'd be insulting the clowns.
Name's Jack Douglas, I live at twenty-one forty-nine Eagle Crest Drive here in Apopka. And the item that I wanted to talk about is not on the agenda tonight. And I was, I was amazed that it hadn't been on the agenda the last ninety days, that it at least come up for the second reading, and that's the charter. As far as I know, the city attorney has completed everything he needs to do in order to have that placed on the agenda. And I have been inquiring occasionally as to why it's not on the agenda. So I have a question. Why is it not on the agenda? Mr. Mayor? I was directing it at you.
Oh, okay, it'll be on there in two weeks.
Is it too late to make the September?
I don't know. Elections, I'm not sure.
So I sent you a email Monday asking you if it was
Too late.
If it was too late. And three days, well, almost three days later, you're telling me you still don't know?
Well, between now and Wednesday, we'll know. Well, the next council meeting, yes.
Thank you.
Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six Rolling Hills Lane. Red is the color because red is my unhappy color, I'm unhappy. Public comment, the fact that it was denied for nine months, excusing all the department heads, cutting off the live feed, then limping back in. Well, I wonder if it's because two people are up for election coming up here right now. And then the slap in the face of reducing it from four to three minutes and another slap in the face with, it's after the, it's, it's before the prayer and pledge. If anyone needs prayers, it's probably people like me. It should be part in front of the agenda. And shame on you because the entire city, every agenda in this city goes prayer, pledge, then the meeting. Get back to it. Secondly, preventive maintenance, I talked to you about it, I've emailed all of you about it, the aspect of doing it. The city presented me with over a thousand items with no completed date of, of the maintenance being completed. And yet, every department head stood up here and said, oh, everything's in line. You, as our leaders, need to check and make sure the fact that preventive maintenance is taking place. When the former director points out that thirty percent of our assets are over thirty percent, or thirty percent of our assets are over their normal lifespan spells a problem. And also the same individual, and maybe that's why he's not here anymore, couldn't verify the preventive maintenance work is being conducted to our sewer and water system. Unforgivable. Development, I'm hoping one of you will put up before the commission today that we're going to put off, we're going to stall it for a while because we are going crazy. Everything's coming up everywhere, we don't have the infrastructure in place to do it. You are down between twelve and eighteen percent of your staff, city administration. Finally, budget workshops. I sent all of you an email. And I like to point out that with regard to emails, can't speak for anyone else. Every time I send a note to a commissioner, to the mayor, I receive back from two. Thank you, Commissioner Nesta and Commissioner Velazquez. I've received maybe one or two in the last two years from the other commissioners and on occasion, I do hear back from the mayor. That's unforgivable. This budget, I forwarded you a document that puts five years in a row, average for the five years, year-to-date, what the performance is, the performance annualized for the year, for the fiscal year, and the new. It should be laid out that way. You guys are getting one book after another, you can't put things together. This budget was a farce. You are better than that, we are better than that, and we as taxpayers sitting on this side of the, do you need to address it? Thank you.
Seb Sticks. Hi, Seb Sticks, I live in Apopka. Sorry for earlier, I got confused. I love the energy that the other people are bringing here today, our community definitely needs this energy. Mis abuelos lived through World War Two and they were able to say that they didn't know how bad it was. Today, or yesterday actually, one of our county commissioners said in the meeting that they have a video that they personally filmed of a group of workers lined up on the curb waiting for ice to take them away. We cannot say that we didn't know. We are watching it happen. Federal militia groups of masked men are targeting Latinos and anyone who does not look white and coercing local police to join. Citizens are being detained. Voters are being abused and shipped across the country, losing their jobs in homes. This is not just the undocumented humans. This is affecting every human that lives here, citizen or not. The labor camps meant to dehumanize our neighbors are built in weeks while we are here discussing. We're just discussing things. There's, you know, I understand that there's a lot of red tape and like steps, but we should work together to find the loopholes around that so that we can take action now. Please do something. It's the, we have been as patient and understanding as you have been. We cannot just sit here and watch it happen. I think a first step would be to, like for the city to fund informational material, like prints, papers, flyers, to, to educate our neighbors on their rights, their constitutional rights, their rights as immigrants. Just please do something, thank you.
Sylvester Hall.
Good evening again and hello to everyone who can hear my voice and everybody sitting in this chamber today. I challenge your moral conscience. Look around you. The city of Apopka, the state of Florida, and our country is in a national crisis. Too many good people witnessing bad things happening and not doing anything about it. Cinderella being completely silent. It's time to say no to hate, stand against hate. Time to stand against corruption and it's time to stand against racism. Let me bring this home because a lot of times when a country or any organization can't move forward, it's because when they refuse to face the state of their organization or the state of this country. When we talk about racism, it's a taboo, we don't, we don't want to talk about it. How do I get tired of you using the race card? Well, racism is displayed for the whole global world to see, it's on the center stage now. And let's go back to what it really, what it really means. If you can hang a person, cut off his genitals and watch him sit there and bleed out and have your kid by your side and you look at that as entertainment, that is where we at. That is what we need to bring back and we need to understand what is going on today. And when we as citizens speak out, everything started at our local level. So that's why I'm bringing it to you here and I'm bringing it to you uncut and I'm bringing it to you raw. Now let's bring it back home. When we talk about annihilation of South Apopka, when they sent all the niggas on the other side, because that's what they were, because you didn't want them to be amongst you. So you sent them over there across the railroad track. And nowadays, when it's time to do the right thing, man, you ask, we need to have a workshop so they can understand how it's going to benefit them. But when we sent them over there, did we ask them, hey, let's have a workshop so we can see how it's going to benefit you? Did we do that, city attorney? Do we have a workshop to let them know that, hey, you're not going to get your adequate streets, lights, plumbing, water? No, we didn't have that. So now we come back with our hypocritical self after we done done all this and try to make like we doing the right thing and we being upstanding citizens. It's time for change. And if we don't face reality, I said we headed for a civil war, go back and read what happened in the last civil war. But I guarantee you, it won't be the same for America this time. It won't be the same. For our commissioner here, a God fearing man, but he still let the prayer go unchecked the way it's supposed to be by protocol. So what do you fear? You fear this administration more than you fear God? That's why I say make it make sense. Make it make sense. It don't, and change is coming.
Albert McKimmy. Albert McKimmy, three six oh three Golden Gem Road. Last city council meeting, I think it was, or perhaps it was a budget meeting, we discussed if it was viable to shut down Golden Gem retention pond. It's not viable, it's not an option. It's part of the comprehensive plan. What we require to do at Golden Gem Road is double down. We need to double the capacity of Golden Gem Road. By doing that, we can actually reduce the overall cost because we can use the film that's currently there to help solve the problems that we already have. Let's have a look at Golden Gem Road and its history. Golden Gem Road came to the city in two thousand and nine from St. John's. It was valued at four point five million dollars. There was a contractual obligation that if the city breached this contract to St. John's, we would have to pay back an interest rate and it would be to the point the contract was breached. So we're now from two thousand and nine to two thousand and twenty-five. So if you like to calculate compound interest at whatever rate you think it might be on four point five million, you'll probably come to ten point four million. You've already spent approximately two million dollars on liners at that facility. You had a grant of one point five million from Mr. Demings. You had spent nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Mr. Devo. We had to fence the place, we had a lot of work to do. If we did have to hand it back, it's not a case of handing it back in the shape it's in just now. You're going to have to hand it back in the condition that's suitable for St. John's to take it. That means you're going to have to fill it, you're probably going to have to grass it and you're probably going to have come down trees. So work it out. Ten million, ten point four million. Add another two million on to, add another one point five. Add the cost that it costs to fence the place and do the work. Now figure how much it's going to cost to bring in fill, to fill it and grass it. We're looking at twenty million dollars if we decide to give it away. Yeah, it's not viable. So what we need to do, and I did message our mayor this week and offered to, to, to come and do a presentation. I've offered this numerous times, nobody wants to take me up on that. So what I'm going to do is if I can't make a presentation here, we're organizing a public hall in which we'll invite all the commissioners and the mayor. And then, I'm not looking to portion blame for what's happened. What I'm looking to do is to provide possible solutions to the problems that you guys face. It's not that, just a couple of weeks ago, I brought to your attention the infrastructure regarding the lift pumps. And lo and behold, at the budget, what happened? As I predicted, seven million dollars on one pump and you have a hundred and seventy of them. We have problems. Some of the members of the public here are engineers. Some of them have solutions to your problems. If you refuse to hear us, be on your own heads.
Valerie Sparkman.
I know, I'm Valerie Sparkman, owner of Just Like Mamas, I wanted to
Just drop, you can drop the mic.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to just say that we are celebrating my first year anniversary. So I just want to pretty much thank most of the city members, commissioners, and and all of the employees for helping us to try to make this car and Jeep show, show a success. I really didn't run into any issues. The only thing that we were attempting, because my sister does this on a regular basis, attempting to charge for this event, but it's almost impossible. Normally, where she normally has it, she can contain it, but it would be impossible because it'll run into other businesses. So I just wanted to say thank you and to all of the people who are on DRC that helped us. This, this is going to come up again, I see later on in the agenda, but I just wanted to use my, this time for a public comment to, to thank the, the city staff.
Are you going to be staying for that item?
Yes.
Okay, awesome, thank you so much.
It is, okay, all right, well that
Well, Mayor, before we do the invocation, I just want to say it's definitely not unnoticed that every other meeting we've done in the last week and a half, you've offered no invocation, no pledge.
Commissioner Smith, prayer, pledge, and faculty.
Because it's going to be on the agenda, you're talking on Clear Lake.
On the
I have your card.
Public comment or, or on the Clear Lake? Okay, then come on down.
My name is Venus Griffith, I live in the Clear Lake Estates subdivision. Almost three years ago, I had an issue at my house, as you know, Brian. And you know why I know it's about three years ago? Because it was the same day I buried my mom and I came home to a big flood from the water, from the lake. And I came here several times and told you about it. And now you want to tax us extra. Clear Lake Estates at Avion Park and Clear Lake Landing.
This is supposed to be public comment on items that are not on the agenda, so
It is on the agenda.
I know.
Yes.
If, if you're, when we get
It is a public comment, it is. You know why? Because, you know, I have to come out of retirement again to discuss this with you. You're, what you're not going to do is tax us for the problem you caused with the different homes, apartments, those ghetto apartments that you put up down on Binyan Road and the houses that you put down there. It was your highway person, it was a female that came here with black hair and she was white. And she promised us that she was going to fix the flooding because she put in the four twenty-nine there. Guess what? We still have flooding. When Milton came in last year, it took out all, almost all of my trees in my yard. We have a sign now, beware of fallen trees. I can't understand that. Here in America, we have a sign because of your doing? That's unheard of. Do you want another Texas with the flooding? Of how many people died, over a hundred people died, over a hundred people are missing. That's what you're going to have right there. That's what you're going to have right there off of Benio road. And the blood will be on your hands. But I thank, uh, uh, Diane and Nestor and, uh, Smith for coming out to see about us. Even you came out to see about us. But we got to fix this problem. This is hurricane season. We getting a lot of rain. And houses are floating down the street in Texas. Have you ever heard of that? This is a hundred year rain event that is happening. We have to fix Clear Lake Estates subdivision lake. It's not our fault. Y'all took away all the orange groves and being greedy because you want to build, build, build. We're not doing that anymore. And you got to come up with something else. How are you taxing us with something that you did? You approved.
Thank you.
Go ahead, say it. Hold, hold the clock.
Thank you.
Yes. Oh, that's all you have to say? Okay. We're not going to be taxed.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Smith, give us a prayer, pledge and fact of the day.
Dear heaven father, we come once again thankful for the privilege to be servants of this city. We ask the name of Father, you will lead, guide and direct us. Bless those that attended tonight. We ask in thy son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Fact of the day. On July sixteenth nineteen forty five at five forty nine A M, the first atom bomb was successfully tested in New Mexico as a part of the Manhattan Project. The Manhattan Project so called because of where the research began will wind up its way through many locations during the early period of theoretical exploration. But the project took final form at the death of New Mexico. Where in nineteen forty three, J. Robert Oppenheimer began directing Project Y at a laboratory at Los Alamos. All known with such minds as Handbeth, Everett Teller and Ari Fair Murray. Here theory and practice came together as problems of achieving critical mass, a nuclear explosion, and the construction of a deliberate bombing was worked out. Fact of the day.
All right. Approval of minutes. Got a set of minutes from the July second meeting? Any changes, any?
No, I think these minutes need a lot of changes and I'll be presenting during my council report on edits that need to be made and then also the policy that, uh, we need to be bringing up as well during my council report. So I think these need to be tabled until we have a discussion about how proper minutes should be taken.
We're going to, we're going to approve the minutes unless-
There's multiple edits and inaccuracies. One resident even spoke about the excessive inaccuracies.
If you want to make those changes and if not, look for motion approved.
No, it needs to be tabled until there's proper, a proper policy to record minutes. These aren't reflective of accurate. What is being spoken in this room and recorded on YouTube is not being transcribed properly on the meeting minutes. So these minutes are, are so far out, out of line of what actually occurred within the room. So-
So you're looking for a motion to table it?
I am.
Okay, got a motion to table it?
Well, I'm going to second it because I did get the email from, um, our city clerk that there was some discrepancy on the-
So we got a motion, got a motion to, uh, to table and second by Commissioner Velazquez. All is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So it will table a motion till whenever three to two with, uh, Commissioner Anderson and Nelson in opposition. Okay, Bradley, gender review.
Uh, Mayor, we do have one item. It's the item under public hearing, uh, number five, resolution twenty twenty five, twenty five. Applicants requesting continuing this item to the, uh, August sixth meeting. So that'll come up when we get to that item.
Okay. That's number five, resolution twenty five, twenty five?
Correct.
Okay. To August sixth?
Yes. All right, presentation. Vladimir, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. Vladimir Simovski, public works director and city engineer. Mayor, commissioners, uh, what we're bringing in front of you tonight is an update to the irrigation system design for the Clearwater Lake. And I'm going to give you some historic information on this. Uh, Clearwater Lake is a closed basin lake located in the city of Apapka, just west of Camp Viva. That has been experiencing high, higher water levels in the recent years, adversely affecting the residents of Clear Lake Landing and Clear Lake Estates in particular. The lake is private and is owned by four separate entities. Clear Lake Landing HOA, which is to the south of the lake. Clear Lake Estates LLC, which is to the north of the lake, more like a northeast. Avian Point Community Association, which is to the west and the northwest section. And Sandra Gay Last, uh, who owns the property on this side right next to Benio road. Uh, it was determined that irrigation water inflow along with excessive rainfall causes the rise of the lake's water level. And to assist the adversely affected properties in two thousand and three, the city permitted and executed emergency pumping of the lake. The emergency pumping was deployed in February of twenty twenty three and finished in April of the same year. During the three months operation, the lake's water level was reduced by three point four feet and the total cost of the pumping was hundred and ninety five thousand and hundred and fifty dollars. Different long-term solutions, alternative solutions were considered. And option one was to recycle the lake's surface water as irrigation source. Option two was to pump the surface water to the North Shore Reclaim Water Treatment Plan, which is to the southeast of the lake, on the other side, I'm sorry, to the southwest, on the west side of State Road four twenty nine. And option three was to repeat temporary pumping whenever needed. So option was, was, option one was ultimately selected as the best alternative due to the less stress on the city's reclaim water system, the Clear Lake Landing HOA owns this system and the St. John's River Water Management District and the FDP approve of this solution. Following the temporary pumping operation, the city contracted the Balmeral Group to design and permit a long-term solution for this problem to assist the affected communities. The long-term solution consists of construction of alternative water, supply irrigation pump station for Clear Lake Landing and disconnection of this residential development's municipal reclaim water system. The project design started in April twenty twenty four for the cost of sixty eight thousand and nine hundred dollars. And it has been completed and permitted with a water management district as a consumptive use permit in January of this year. The permit is issued to Clear Lake Landing. The normal water level of Clear Lake, of Clearwater Lake is at elevation sixty five feet. The district permit allows surface water withdrawal of irrigation down to elevation of sixty three feet. The current lake elevation is sixty nine point seventy five feet, which is up approximately five point five inches from the sixty nine point three feet that was measured on July first. The engineering construction cost estimate is four hundred and fifty six thousand dollars, of which three hundred and ninety seven is for construction and fifteen percent in contingency, it's roughly fifty nine point six thousand dollars. Uh, considering the hundred and four, hundred and forty two, uh, single residential units at, um, inside the subdivision, approximately that cost will be about three thousand dollars per household. Now, the Avian Point already contributed six thousand dollars in support services and the city may contribute another sixty thousand dollars in in-kind services, which will leave the HOA with approximate cost of about three hundred and thirty six thousand dollars. Divided by the hundred and forty, forty two, uh, units, that will be approximately twenty four hundred dollars per household. So the city expense to date are two hundred and sixty three thousand dollars, as we already mentioned, which is due to the emergency pumping of hundred and ninety four thousand and the design cost for the, for the irrigation system, which is approximately around sixty nine thousand dollars. And that concludes my presentation.
All right. Any, any questions for Vlad?
I've got a couple of questions. So we met obviously yesterday and I appreciate you taking the time to meet with me. Uh, there was a, a couple of questions. So the graph that we, that was shown there, that's an older graph. And to confirm, it's not pumped down to sixty seven, it's pumped down to sixty three.
Correct. The permit calls pumping down to sixty three.
Okay. And it's currently at sixty nine point three?
Sixty nine, currently sixty nine point seventy five as of noon today. The sixty nine point three was the reading I gave you yesterday. That was on July first.
July first, okay.
So we had a few days of severe rain in the last two weeks.
So, and, and this is something we discussed as well. So the, the process would be to, uh, remove them from our system effectively. So it'll be, they'll be their own self-contained system of irrigation, correct?
That is correct.
So what's the process that would happen if for some reason we go through a series of drought? And they don't have any, they, they can't pump lower than what that pond currently is. What, how do we, what's the process to get them connected back, I guess, to our system? Is there new permits that have to go into place with St. John's? What does that look like?
Uh, the permit has a large of conditions in there and I think they're also addressing some of the drought. I think that was considered both by the Water Management District as well as the engineer of record, Mr. Seidel. And, uh, there are very extensive conditions. They're described in, uh, very detail. But what can happen is, uh, for example, if there's a severe drought and they cannot really utilize that water for, they cannot pump below sixty three, let's say, feet, right? Uh, in that case, there can be a modification of the permit because the HOA is actually on the permit. They're the permitting team. So in order to bring it back to the city system, it will have, they will have to be reconnected to the system, which should not affect our permit.
So then their, their permit that they would have, would that become null and void and they would have to reapply should we get into a similar scenario? Or what does that look like?
I guess that will be the scenario. That can be looked at, but I think the engineer and the Water Management District worked closely on this and they considered all the options based on the demand, based on how much water is available in the lake. And I, from my recollection, I think it's about nineteen point two million gallons a year with a maximum monthly withdrawal to four point four, of course, not to exceed the nineteen point two annually.
Okay. So that, from the calculations and what multiple entities have looked at, they're seeing this as, it's a rare, it would be the rarest occurrence if we go through a drought that they can't pump more than what's in there. Was that a mischaracterization?
If, if you can repeat, please.
Sure, yeah. So just from, I, I thought I was repeating and maybe not. I just want to make sure I'm on the same page with you. With all the calculations that were taken into account with the permit and the process, everyone is confident, all the parties involved, the engineer of records, St. John's, uh, they're all confident that even if we do experience a drought, there will still be enough water to do what needs to be done irrigation wise.
To my understanding, that's what is presented. That's why the permit was issued. Now, I can't speak on their behalf, but I'm sure that the-
That was the general understanding.
Considered this, yes. Otherwise, in rare situations, they will allow this kind of, uh, permit.
Okay.
To give into a private entity.
Understood. So then the cost per home and, or I guess the total cost itself, that's just for construction. That's not ongoing maintenance or anything of that nature, correct?
That is for construction, correct.
So just exclusive of that. And so have we, do we know what the HOA has in reference to, um, approvals from their members? Um, are they, are they in all saying, yes, we want to do this? Let's get it started tomorrow? Or is this something that has a longer runway?
I don't have that information on the HOA part. I think they, I'm assuming they, before pulling the permit, with the Water Management District, they discussed that among the-
Okay, so we don't know if there is, there's not maybe ballots in place or something that we know for sure that there's a, yes, this is the route the HOA as a whole wants to go.
I, yes, I don't have that information yet.
And then do we know in reference to their side of it? Or do they have financing lined up already? Is that, and this, we discussed this yesterday as well. Is there, how, do we know how they're paying for their side of it?
I'm not sure. I don't have information on that.
Okay. So they haven't communicated in one way or the other, what, what that looks like?
No, not to start, no.
Okay. And I was just curious again, I didn't know if this was, we're going to start implementing this next week? Or if this is just a update and we're still six to nine to twelve months out? What, what does the timeline look like? Kind of best case, worst case?
I would say if we, they start tomorrow, let's say, it will take about six months for mobilization, getting all the equipment, the construction alone should be not more than two to three months.
Okay. And then we would still have to, and we discussed this yesterday as well, we would have to do the disconnect in-house from our system to theirs. And so that's, and that's not budgeted in here, correct?
Uh, that is correct, yes.
Okay. So we still, that would be part of the process, but that could happen in conjunction-
Correct.
At the same time.
That, that can be one day operation.
Okay, that's a pretty easy.
It's easy and it's very inexpensive.
Okay, understood. I think that's the questions I have right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smith, you got anything?
I, I guess my concern was in the event that there was a drought and they were not able to pump from the lake. I guess when we initially went through this process, I thought that the agreement was, assumption on my part was that there was going to be a valve installed. So should they not be able to pump from the lake, then they could go back to using reclaimed water until such kind of enough water back in the lake again for them to resume pumping.
Yes, so, uh, looking at the permit, the permit is good for ten years, till twenty thirty five. And it's, of course, it's hard to see the future, right? If we're going to have a drought. But what we have seen is since, especially since Hurricane Irma, two thousand and seventeen, I believe, we're seeing more and more increase in the water levels and more and more rainfall, right? Every year. So it's hard to predict. I would say probably by the time the permit expires, it's very unlikely that we're going to see a severe drought in the lake, even being a closed basin. Uh, on the other question, I'm sorry, the other question was, uh-
In, in reference to the, the valve to be able to go-
Yes, yes. But the system will remain there. We're just going to have to disconnect, make a disconnection there, right? Which is going to be cutting the pipe. The valve's going to be there. We're going to have a cap and there's going to be a valve on the other side. So in, let's say, a situation of a drought, they approach St. John's, they ask for a modification of the permit or maybe even annoying the permit completely, right? And going back to the city system, there will be an easy connection to be put in place.
All right. And I guess during our meeting, I asked the question if the HOA was going to secure their own loan for this two, for this three hundred and thirty six thousand dollars. And so we don't know that.
No, we don't have that information.
Commissioner Velazquez? So you know, we went back and forth on this. So initially, this started in twenty twenty two, where we did the emergency pumping itself.
Twenty twenty three.
Was twenty twenty two?
February of twenty twenty three until April of the same year, twenty twenty three.
And, and I do remember before we even got to that point, there was a lot of discussion. And I know that the chair, our mayor, had been meeting with the HOA. So the question that I have for the mayor is when you had these meetings with them and we, and you presented the solution to them, because I do remember it was a four to one vote for the emergency pumping, which he was the descending vote for that. But then he approved the second part, which was the design and for, to help the, uh, community use the lake for reclaimed water. Because that was approved unanimously. Um, when you had the discussion with the HOA, were they aware that they were going to incur this payback?
Well, we initially were going to take it on as our, as our own project and just- Well, we initially were gonna take it on as our, as our own project and just put them as a part of our reclaimed system. What Saint John's and DEP came back and said, no, you can't do that. They have to own it. If we, if we control that system, we didn't have to treat the water to a different standard, which would be a lot more expensive, which doesn't, wouldn't make, from from a city point of view, wouldn't make financial sense.
No, I understand that, but you know, a lot of what took place between the HOA and our mayor wasn't really shared with us. When it came before us, it it came with these solutions. But my concern is now, the big expenses coming on, and so from what I'm gathering is, the HOA and the membership of this community was unaware that they were going to, I'm already hearing it, that they were unaware that they were going to be paying back the city. And so I asked that at the agenda review is, are we footing this entire bill, or are they paying us back?
So the city expense to date, as I said, was two hundred and sixty three thousand dollars. I, to my knowledge, there's no intention to get this money reimbursed from the HOA. But the construction cost, which can amount to roughly forty five, four four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right, you told me four hundred and fifty six thousand.
Fifty six, correct, correct. Uh Avian Point already deposited sixty thousand dollars as their contribution. And the city is willing to help with another sixty thousand dollars equivalent to in-kind support, which will remain, leave the HOA to pay for, compensate for the three hundred and thirty six thousand dollars for the construction of the system. Now, that being said is, the residents will stop paying for reclaimed water to the city. So over the last twelve months, our approximation was, that's a month for about hundred and ten thousand dollars overall, which in turn will equal to about three years of uh breaking even for the cost of the three hundred and thirty six thousand dollars. That includes some contingency as well. So it could be less than that.
So then where does the two point four, two uh two point four uh household?
So so I estimated that based on uh uh three hundred and thirty six thousand dollars divided by, I believe, hundred and forty two households there, that will equal roughly to about twenty four hundred dollars per house.
Okay, so.
The total cost for for the.
Deciding to wait out the three years because they won't be paying the reclaimed water?
Correct, correct. By not paying during those three years, they should be able to recover that cost that they're gonna invest in the construction. And then everything after that is gonna be kind of saving for that. Now, there's gonna be some operational cost, of course, but I think that's nothing in comparison to this.
So they'll be paying, so they would be paying back the city for the cost, but then they would be, you're saying they would gain, get back that that cost that they're paying the city in three years because they're not paying the reclaim?
Well, y- I'm not sure how we wanna structure that financially. It can be either them taking a loan, like, let's say, a community like a townhomes or or condominiums, when they need to replace the roof, they will typically get the loan for three years, five years, ten years, whatever it is. And then they will be assessed through that loan, right? So that would be the option, the city not uh taking the entire bill.
Are we legally allowed to lend money?
Because that's gonna be, that's gonna be uh problematic from uh establishing an MSBU, because it's a private system, right?
So I guess my question, I'm sorry, we're not finished, are you? Okay, so I guess my question is, has there be a meeting of the minds with the HOA in the community? It sounds like there hasn't been a meeting of the minds, so this.
This should just, this is a problem, I mean, this is, obviously, it's a, it's a, it's not an agenda item, it's just a, you know, presentation.
Yeah, so so the next step will be to to discuss this with the.
So there's gonna be a meeting with the HOA? And with the residents?
Yes. We're having them here, that's that's the reason we're.
Okay, to discuss that they. Okay, because it sounds like they don't, they don't really want to, just two point four is not, they're not okay with it.
Yes, yeah, this is just to give you an update of where we are with this. When the problem started, what the city did so far, and uh what we have right now at the table.
Attorney Shepherd, are we able to loan money?
Um if you say it like that, the answer is no, but obviously, you know, for example, we have this special assessment situation with Emerson, and there are other ways by which city can be a vehicle of finance, but not be loaning the money. So the it's, it's not a, it's not a, the way you ask, it's a straightforward question, no. But there are other financing mechanisms city can use to help homeowners get things they otherwise couldn't get at a cheaper rate.
Well, so that one we bonded.
That would be the bond.
So we'd go through the bond, like, you would have, we would have to go through the bond process again.
Some version of that.
So we couldn't just use our reserves and and give them half a million dollars, and then say, you owe us.
That's correct.
We can't do that.
We are not a bank.
We can't lend money.
Correct, so we would have to bond this.
It's not big enough to bond it, it would just be a bank.
As the mayor just mentioned, and as our city attorney just mentioned, similar to what we've done with Emerson Park. However, what is happening with that one, we are, that ownership is coming to us.
Yeah, it's a lot different. These are really different issues.
And I, in this particular case, I don't think we would be taking ownership, because I don't think we can, as I understand it.
So it's very different then.
Yeah.
So I don't want to compare these then, these are very different.
I I was only trying to compare that there there is a way by which a city can facilitate things getting paid for, for the benefit of residents in the community, not about ownership or anything else. And one of those ways is to support a bond issue or some other uh vehicle that has the city as a facilitator as opposed to somebody who's an obligee or anything like that. So that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, understood.
Now, i- it was my understanding, because this is a private lake or private pond, that the city could not do that. That the HOA would have to go out and get their own funding, because this is a private pond. It's it's not a, it's not, that that was my understanding, so. And and then my other question is, if the HO decides this is not what they want to do, then what's the alternative?
I think those are very good questions.
Illegal question and a Vlad question.
So what are the options, I guess?
Yeah.
What are the financial options that they have to finance this, what it sounds like to me?
So so well, the answer to the financial.
Again, I I think Cliff is saying, you know, basically, we can facilitate, so, you know, help them, but I don't know if we can serve as a guarantor or anything like that in regards to a loan. Again, this is.
Can you state that again, sorry?
I don't know if we can serve as a guarantor on the loan or anything.
Wouldn't be our loan.
It would be their loan. We could just only facilitate, show them what to do, how to do it, or something in that regard.
They'd have to get their own financing.
Yes.
A- in every scenario, they'd have to get their own financing.
That's my understanding, yes. Because we do not own this, but go ahead.
All of that is accurate. I I will bring up, a- and this goes back several years, and I, so, and I'm not a bond finance lawyer or any of that. But when I was uh in my uh first tenure at Mount Dora for ten years, one of the things that happened there that the the city facilitated was allowing, uh it was that case, I think it was a private school, um to get a applied for and get with the facilitation of the city, a lower rate for essentially, bonds in in municipal work are loans, that's what they are. It's just where that money comes from, a bank or an actual floating of a bond. Um but we were able to facilitate through some mechanism, a private bond, but at city rates, where we had no liability, there was opinions written on that, we had no responsibility, but it allowed the school to get a much lower rate on its financing. And that's what I'm talking about. I'm assuming that that vehicle still exists, but that would be a question for your bond counsel.
Exactly.
Any other questions for?
Well, there was a couple, there was a question asked, and it hit three different things.
I think the other one was, what would they do? If I understood correctly, if they can't get a loan, then what is the next step for them? And again, I guess that will come in the additional discussions that you have with the HOA. I don't know if you know?
I, yeah, I I don't know. I don't know if I ever answered to that question, right? I mean, the option is, we already have the design, so we invested almost seventy thousand dollars in the design. And and that was considered as the best option out of the three options, right?
That was with the intention, when we did that, whether that was with the intention that we would take the system on without having to treat the water to our standard. When, when they came back and said, you can't do that, then it became, has to be a HOA private.
Because we cannot mix that water with
Right.
the other reclaimed water that goes to public access. And that's why we have to disconnect them from the system. By them doing their own system, they're not sending anything to public access, they're just using for their use.
But isn't this the same scenario, or what's being described as what we're doing at Border Lake, or what the proposed long-term plan is, is that we want to pump out of that lake, treat it, and then push it, put it into our system? Can't we do that same thing here?
It's it's not the same. The Border Lake is is a public lake, and it's not, it's m- m- millions and millions and millions, because we're talking about the the four lakes or five lakes that will be taking the the water levels down, so it's not, it's not apples and oranges, but it's it's gala apples and red delicious.
But this is saying ninety million gallons a year, basically.
About ninety point two.
Amount that we could use.
Well, but you're 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 taking it away from by by we shutting the line off, so you're, you are giving ninety million to them, and we're taking ninety million off of our system.
I think the difference here, one is private and one is private.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, and I guess I'm just trying to understand, because I wasn't on the council uh when this happened. So was there any type of negligence or error on the city's part that put the city liable for anything with this lake?
No, no, thi- this is a private lake again, and yes, like I said in the beginning.
Didn't we have, um some of the new construction had some uh ponds and things that like that, that failed, didn't they?
That was Avalon, if I'm not mistaken.
E- either Avalon or Avian Point. Didn't they have failed ponds that we were supposed to inspect and didn't, and that helped cause some flooding?
Is that why they're contributing? That's the sixty thousand dollars, what is it they're contributing?
And I thought that number was eighty for some reason. So the the ponds to the west and the nor- yeah, west of the pond and then north of that, that was Avian Point. I mean, that failed almost immediately, and I think that was obviously contributory to the flooding issues that all those neighborhoods ex- uh experienced. And there's an oversight agency that has to confirm that those are done properly, and we are that agency.
Is that an accurate statement?
I'm, I don't have that information, but I would assume that that was already inspected and.
There was.
Yeah.
This all took place in twenty three, so I'd have to go.
Well, no, the flooding occurred in twenty two, and then we finally took care of it in twenty three, early twenty three, so it was twenty two flooding.
Yeah, but I I do remember there was a lot of discussion about a particular pond. I'd have to go back to the to the, to the notes that I had, because I have a thick folder of Clear Lake when we first started.
I I think that's why Avian Point gave the sixty thousand.
They had to give sixty thousand for something.
Well, no, they had said that they had no involvement in it.
But they gave sixty thousand.
Because they wanted, if you went back and watched it, they wanted, it was in, it was a trade-off for higher density. They need to do it out of their goodwill. They wanted a higher density. We negotiated and said, please contribute to this. They said, we're not, we're not liable for that, it's not our fault at all. And we still said, okay, well, if you want that higher density that's gonna get you five, seven million dollars more in value, give us eighty thousand dollars. And I thought it was eight, maybe, okay, uh eighty thousand was the number. Um so that that's the series of events that happened. They didn't just give this out of their goodwill and saying, hey, this is our fault. It was a trade-off, basically. Uh we'll have higher density, and we'll give you money for it effectively to help fix this issue, is the series of events that occurred there.
Yeah. Any other questions? Yeah, we're on the show. Any other questions that we'll bring? Come on, Brian, come on.
When I heard the shirt comment earlier tonight about wearing a red shirt, I was a little confused at first, but, because mine was black. But now I understand why you came in here with a a red shirt, because now I'm fuming, hearing a lot of these different options. Mayor, you and I have several emails back and forth with each other. I've asked for meetings, I've asked to sit down with you. I had many meetings with Saint John's River at my house, my personal house in Clear Lake Landings. And just so everybody knows, and for the record, my name is James Brian Mater, M A T E R. I go by Brian Mater. I'm the HOA board president at Clear Lake Landings. Um been involved with this um for for a while since they started pumping on at this situation. I was there when they drafted the first permit. I was there when they issued stuff. I was there when Saint John's personally wanted to have a conversation to let me know how important this issue was, pulling away from the reclaimed water, and then having to go back there and reconnect it. So just to kind of clarify and clear with the rest of the commissioners out there, what's gonna happen is, and what's been discussed with Saint John's and Greg Seidel, which the city hired and paid for him, which is a great asset for the city. I enjoyed working with him. Um very true, very honest, upfront with everything, that any question that we had, he backed it up with a lot of data. Um so that was really good. So let's get back to the issue of what what caused this. It wasn't Clear Lake Estates' fault, it wasn't Clear Lake Landing's fault, it was the overgrowth of the community. Exactly what everybody complains about, day in and day out. I'm sorry, but when you take away trees and dirt, and you do all this stuff, and you put rooftops down, and black pavement and concrete, and a little tree here and there, you're going to have that water run somewhere. It's going to go somewhere. I've only lived here for four years. I'm from Colorado. It just so happens, I was sat on the water commission in Colorado. So when you have a lot of these issues that take place, and I drive down Boy Scout or Binion, that didn't flood when I moved here four years ago, and now you go flying down the road, you gotta be careful because it's flooding. And they don't even have all the payment done yet. Th- there's more houses that are coming, there's more apartments that are coming. This is a short-term solution. I hear the long-term out there. This is a short-term. Yes, we're bringing in ninety million gallons. Yes, we're doing all this, but we're also adding more houses, more pavement, more rooftops, more everything, more traffic. I mean, you're gonna push water. You drive through a puddle, you throw the water some, another direction, you 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 reroute it. Somewhere this water's going to go. I'm sorry, but when the orange girls were sitting over on Boy Scout and they were doing this, and now you've dug down, you've moved that water somewhere else. It's coming to our area. It's not gonna go away. All right, what I'm irritated about is, I keep being told that this is going to be an asset. Tonight, this is the first I've ever been told at all that the HOA was gonna have to go get a loan on this. That's not what was said. It's in emails. I have it. This is the first. I asked for meetings. Mayor, if you remember, I sat in your office, and I told you, I don't want to play politics, but I will. Do you remember that? Okay, we're playing politics now. This is not gonna go easy on you, on us. I don't see why Clear Lake Estates, Clear Lake Landings, or anybody should have any financial, I understand it's it's owned by us. But if you look at your own picture, by your survey, look at Avian Point, they have one little dinky retention pond that's flooded up next to ours. Where do you think their water's going? Over by the four twenty nine, over wherever, it's 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 not. It's coming back over there. That's why this water's not going down. It's not dropping. We were drought for three, three, four months. You were on water restriction, I think we still are on water restrictions. And you just stated it went up over the last couple of days from July first to, what's today, the fifteenth, sixteenth? In in two weeks, we've had a little bit of rain. We're not even, we haven't even started yet. We have not even started this. My question is, is, when I brought this up, I stated point blank, we have a hundred and forty two residents in our area. We are not buying an asset. An asset is something you can turn around and sell, a car, your house, jewelry, whatever. We're we're being forced to put a pump in, and then we gotta maintain it. And if you remember, man, when we discussed, it sounds really good on paper and it's lipstick on a pig. We're going to take you off of the reclaimed water, okay? We're going to bill you for this loan that I didn't even know about. I thought we were paying the city back. They were gonna do the billing, they were gonna do all that. We're going to pay back this loan of four hundred and fifty thousand, because I didn't hear the three hundred and something thousand until tonight. Um I think the two numbers of sixty got transposed. I don't, I think you guys paid that sixty and sixty. And that's how you came up with two hundred and something thousand. You have to go back to the other slide on there, but I think that's what happened with it. I think the sixty and sixty is not being deducted off the four fifty eight. I think the sixty and sixty is not being deducted off the four fifty-eight, um, unless that's something new. We were told that we were going to have to maintain this pump. The fence around it, I just paid twenty thousand dollars for a fence around our community. You can't insure this stuff. I'm an insurance adjuster. That's what I do for a living. You cannot insure this type of stuff. You cannot insure pumps that are going to sit in water without huge rates or ACV policies. You can't, they're not going to get replacement costs. That's not an asset. An asset is, I can go sell it. I can't go over to Clear Lake Estates and say, hey, guess what? I got this cool asset. It's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Give me two hundred thousand, you can buy it. I can't do it. We're stuck with this. I have to pay for the belts, the pumps, the sand filters. We have to make sure everything is taken care of over in this community. There's a hundred and forty-two of us. That's it, houses. This is going to be a huge deal. We don't even know what the cost is because it hasn't gone on to RFP. We're just, we're in the phase. And then I see that we're throwing this out on the meeting right now, just to like, let's just sneak it through, get it out there, let everybody know we're discussing about it. But let's hide it and not go for the facts. I've asked for meetings. I came up with negotiations on what we would do, how we can negotiate it. And it was like, no, I'm ready to talk to your homeowners. Because you wanted to tell them, you're not going to get a hundred dollar bill, you're going to get a fifty dollar bill. You wanted to, you wanted to make it look really good that they were getting this discount. But I didn't realize that I might have to assess you in ten years because the pump fell and we don't have the money to fix it. That's what we don't have. And the loan, I'm sorry commissioners, man, this is the first I've heard about that. Very disappointed. If I had time to switch shirts with them, I'd run outside real quick and switch shirts. I think I might be a little heavier than him, but I'm irritated. I, I, I don't do business that way, man. I hope that you can come back to the drawing board, respond to the last emails that we have. And let's, let's work this out. It's going to be better for everybody and according, and, and your buddies over at Avian Point that did drop water. That was eighty thousand dollars was shut-up money. They knew they were getting cut off by seven million dollars and if they paid eighty million dollars, you're good. We both known that. We both business. I've been in business a long time. If, if you get fined a hundred thousand dollars, but you made a hundred million dollars, I'll pay the fine. Let's do it. That's what they did. They threw this out there. We've got a problem. It was not caused by Clear Lake Estates. Who was there first. It was not caused by Clear Lake Landings. It's a joint thing. It's a problem. It's there and I think the city needs to own up to it. Thank you.
I, I have a question for you, sir. Mr. Me- Meter?
Mater, like Tomater, like the cars.
Just, um, so what is it that you guys are asking from the city?
Say that again, ma'am.
What is it that you guys are asking for the city? What is it? How, what is it that you guys, what responsibility, what, what is it that you guys need from us?
I understand that it's a, uh, we own the lake. I think we own three quarters of it or eighty percent or whatever. I'm not sure what the, the total amount of the square foot of the lake that we own. Me personally, I don't feel like we should have to be responsible for something that we did not cause. If, if, if I turned around and did that with all of you, everybody would be upset. If I did it with anybody in this room, they'd be upset. If the cameraman that's sitting over there said, hey, by the way, I ran out of tape, I need to bill every one of you guys a little bit of money because I need more tape. We'd all be upset, wondering what's going on. That's what's going on here. We're being billed for something that I don't think we caused. We didn't cause this problem. We didn't cause the issue. I feel that the city should step up, find a way to make it work. I understand it's a private lake, but they're going to have to figure it out because this issue is because of overdevelopment, plain and simple.
So Mr. Mater, you.
Yes, ma'am.
You showed a piece of document there. Was that an email from the mayor?
I have several emails from the mayor. This is just, I ran out of paper. So I couldn't print everything, but I imprinted the important stuff that I wanted to.
One is that, yeah. And, and what do the emails say?
Well, it's ta- it's trying to negotiate stuff, trying to get stuff going. That's having a meeting. We sat down two, two times with you. I sat down with, is it Richard Earp? I believe he was.
Richard Earp at the.
Yeah, Richard was at my house two times, maybe three. I know for a fact, two times with Greg. Greg was at my house five times and several phone calls.
So unfortunately, you're showing documentation.
You can have it.
No access to. I don't have those documents.
No problem. I, I will make sure they're forwarded over.
Ask our city clerk to give us at least a copy of all those documents.
Absolutely.
Um, so that I have an idea of, and, and I said that in the beginning was that the mayor basically was sitting with the HOA. And when that came to us a few years ago, it already came with solutions. And, um, and so now the solution is coming to fruition right now. Because we have the design and we're ready to go forth with it.
The permit's been approved. The, the permit's been approved. We own the permit. It's definitely been approved. And, and I, I hear you say the word solution. I call it a temporary solution. This isn't going to go away. I don't think pumping water back out of here is going to work. What's going to happen if we do short the, the lake? Just so everybody's clear on, on the commission, on the stand here, on the dive. We're kind of like on a gas gauge. That's the way the permit's set up. When we get down so low. We're going to have to reapply for the permit to say, hey, we're too low. We need to reconnect into the, into the reclaimed water again, do all that type of stuff. It gives us about ninety days. The permit's about ninety days. So we have to, once again, pay for. Experts to fill out this permit, which is huge, and send it over to them saying, okay, the lake's drained down too low. We're going to cause an issue. We're going outside of our permit. We need to re-go back into the reclaimed water and do all that. And once we do that, then we have to wait for that approval and hopefully we make that ninety days and hopefully I don't make a hundred and forty-two people upset at me because the grass died. Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it.
Okay, I think everybody here knows me. My name is Gregory Griffith. I'm also in Clear Lake Estates. I came here, uh, to tonight's meeting because a concerned citizen. Gave me a heads up and said, do you know that you guys have a presentation for Clear Lake? And I said, no, I don't know about that. Then I find out in calling around, emails, nobody in my subdivision knows anything about what's going on here tonight. I called the president of the HOA or emailed the president. He has no, he's on vacation. He had no idea any of this was going on. To me, it sounds like you have an idea that you want to put forward. I don't know if you want to slick it in, but you have an idea that you want to put forward, but it sounds like it's ad hoc. It's something that should have been set up and discussed and hammered out in a committee, in an office somewhere. But not out in public for the world to see how unprepared you all are, because that's where we are. We have so many questions. We've been on this now for almost forty-five minutes. There are a lot of questions here. The boards, the HOA board members for all the affected areas. Should have been in a meeting with the mayor and that this stuff should have been hammered out. That's my question. Why wasn't that done? You're coming here with an ad hoc solution, which is really a temporary solution. And you ask the question, what happens if we have a, uh, a drought? Well, I'll ask the other question. What happens if we have a flood? And all of a sudden, the water is coming up the hill from the lake onto my property and I lose another tree. Another seventy-foot tree. I've lost two already. Gigantic trees, thank God. They fell away from my house because they would have crushed my house. And they're all due to this problem. I moved into Clear Lake Estates. My wife and I moved into Clear Lake Estates in two thousand and seven, February of two thousand and seven. We had no problem at all with flooding until around eighteen, two, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. We came in, we met with Brian Nelson, we told him about our problems. Because the water was inching up, was creeping up, was overflowing. The reason why it was overflowing. We could see the development across the lake where there was a forest. Now there's concrete. Now there's asphalt. Now there are houses and there's not sufficient structure in place. To get rid of that water. So it goes into Clear Lake and it just builds. And there's no way for the water to gal. Four twenty-nine came in, they built their concrete retention around. That's just going to hold more water in our system.
Thank you.
I think you need to go back to the drawing board and you need to hammer out some of these things behind closed doors before you come and say, okay, this is what we want to do. You don't know what you want to do yet.
Albert McCamie, three, six, oh, three Golden Jam Road. At the beginning of this presentation, there were three options proposed. And I noticed with interest that the option that was chosen was the option that had least impact on the city. It was the optimum solution, bearing in mind the lake belongs to somebody else. It's a way the city could say, not our problem. It's not in my backyard. But the fact of the matter is, what you guys are doing is not realized and it's a temporary solution. I've sensed for a while, there is a solution to a lot of the problems in the city's infrastructure. And the second option where you were looking at North Lake Shore pumping water to there coincides with something that I think is a potential. I don't have time here tonight to discuss it because it's going to take a whole lot longer than three minutes. But what I'm going to say to you is that we're, we really don't understand what's happening in Apopka. When you look at the city of Apopka, on Google, it'll come up as approximately thirty-four, thirty-six square miles in size. If you then look at how much of that is water, it comes down to one point four seven square miles. Roughly four percent of the area that we inhabit is water. Over a period of a year, we have between fifty and sixty inches of waterfalls on land. Where do you think that fifty or sixty inches goes? It ends up in your lakes, most of it, because what we've done is we've cut down all the trees, all the foliage. Which used to provide a buffer for water. It would, it would, it would take in five times. Its volume in the water and won't let it run. The minute we took all that away, we've effectively allowed water to run everywhere. So if we consider that today we're speaking about Clear Lakes, the other week we're speaking about somewhere else. Next week it'll be something, we've got a problem with our infrastructure. Because we're not capable of dealing with the water that's running off our land. What we really need to do is look, if you've got a city, people put around highways around the city, yeah? What we should be looking to do is see if we can use pipes that are already in the ground, round about the city. To transfer water between one area and another area. We already have water coming from Ultimont Springs up to Lust Road. Is there any way we can cut into those pipes? Is there any way we can take water to Lust Road? Is there any way that that water can be processed at Lust Road and fed back into the city reclaim, reclamation water system? The answer is yes. The answer is it only takes a little bit of imagination, a little bit of vision. Not about the money that the city might have to spend today. It's what the city is going to have to spend tomorrow when it can't solve its problems.
Good evening, uh, mayor and commissioners. Uh, my name is Richard Withers. I live at twenty-four thirty-six Wyndham Bay Place in Clear Lakes Estates. One of forty-two homes in that subdivision. You heard the number one hundred and forty-two a little while ago. And that sounds pretty accurate based on my observations, so. There's been a bunch of houses that have been put in across the lake from us. And you know what? The water went up about proportionally to the number of houses that were thrown in there. Now, this is not something that Clear Lakes Estates residents approved or asked for. This is something that the city or one of its departments approved. And apparently approved it without thinking that what happens if the proposed drainage system, which is tiny on this map. Or on this photograph, uh, what happens if that fails? Where's the water going to go? Well, of course it's going to go into the lake and then from the lake into our backyards. We've got about, what, Gregory, uh, thirty trees that are dead, just standing there. Yeah, yeah, behind our property, I'm afraid to let anybody, including my grandchildren, go back there because one of those trees can fall on. I mean, it's a danger.
You're my neighbor. I watch your tree.
Okay, all right, let, let him speak.
Yeah, he's right. It, uh, you know, when that, when that ground was soggy, the trees that didn't fall died, so. But there's a bunch of dread, dead trees back there and I invite any of you to come in. I'll be glad to give you the gate code. Come in and look at all the dead trees between us and the lake. Option number two seems to me to make sense. Now, there may be technical reasons why it does not make sense. But from a visceral standpoint, the idea of transferring the water from Clearwater Lake over to Lake Apopka. Or even into the so justly named Mud Lake would make a lot more sense. Now I have one question for you. What was wrong with option number two? What, what is the technical reason or the financial reason or whatever reason why it couldn't have been selected? Question number two, who's going to maintain this system that you're proposing? I think it's going to be the homeowners and what we're going to have is homeowner dues that go up and up and up. And who knows what responsible person is going to maintain and operate that system? Third thing that concerned me was the term of the permits that have been secured. Apparently the permits are based on water levels. That's a strange situation, but I, I urge you not to act on the city's proposal until you've considered the matters raised tonight.
Sylvester Hall, Rock Springs Ridge. Um, first thing I want to talk about is decor. The mayor reached that out before every pocket come in. When my neighbor was up here speaking, Mr. Abby was trying to give some good advice. You should have watched what the mayor was doing. Went paying him no attention whatsoever. Looking down, looking around, just asking what he said. Now, I wish we could go back and roll the tape and to give everybody here.
We're on, we're on the Clear Lake solution. Can you just state?
I'm, I'm with the Clear Lake. Thank you. Just, just sit. Let me talk. Let me, let me talk. Thank you. Go back and roll the tape and that give you some insight. So you wouldn't ask the question, what do you want us to do about it? We want the problem fixed. They want the problem fixed. Two, three years ago, I took a look, I went to the Griffins home. I walked around. You couldn't walk out two or three feet without the water right there. And it's mud, mucky and, and, and everything. They worrying about trees, I'm worrying about alligators. Forget the trees. What about alligators looking out there? Any little toddler running around, they gone, they missing. You don't know where they at. Or quote unquote, your pet. So when we look at things, bring this to full circle, Ms. Griffin brought up Texas. When a national disaster happen. If you are not doing what you're supposed to do, because all you up there are frontline for public safety. Keeping the public safe. That's your job. So now if you derelict on that. When a national disaster happen that you can't control, but you didn't have your stuff in order in the first place. For you, okay, but for the family members whose bodies are floating in water, it's not okay for them. And so, man, when you look at this, you would think three years, four years. However long it's been going on, that we knew about it, we should be better prepared with a solution. A permanent solution, not a temporary solution. And at no cost should anybody from that community have to foot a bill for something that we're doing. Mr. Olson comes up here all the time and tell you guys about, that's his pet peeve, infrastructure. We just building, building, building. And nobody pay attention to him. Just like you did with Mr. Abby was up here talking, Abby was up here talking, giving you solutions, but you're too arrogant to take them. And that needs to stop. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, well, I just want to close out. I mean, one of the things that hadn't been brought up is, so if you look at the. Residential usage in Clear Lake. For last, or two thousand twenty-four, I, I guess on average year, we had, there was fifty million gallons of water that was used by Clear Lake Landing. So fifty million, four hundred and seventy-five thousand gallons. So, and, and I know this is an inaccurate number, but Vlad, this is just a round number, which probably half of that would be. Would get back to the groundwater, back to the lake. Half of it would be either transfer, you know, evapotranspiration or. Or. I mean, just, I, I know that's a, that's, this is real inaccurate science.
Yeah, this is a.
Yeah. Yeah.
More difficult question, right?
Right.
Roughly maybe between twenty and thirty percent will go to.
Back to the lake. So you, you would.
To evaporation and, and the rest will go into the lakes and it will stay in the groundwater.
Okay. So, so whatever that number is, so we're going to take, let's say, twenty-five million gallons out of the, out of the, the system every year, if they, if they went on to, went to their own HOA irrigation system. And the average homeowner is one hundred and forty-two of them. So their, their average bill per month is ten thousand four hundred ninety-eight ninety-seven. So if you take one hundred and forty-two divided by the, or ten thousand divided by the one hundred and forty-two units, the average water bill for Clear Lake Landing is seventy-four dollars a month. So you do the math, you're, you know, every, anyway, how you figure out the loan, it, you're, you're saving money. The homeowners are saving money by having their own irrigation system. Would that be a fair statement? Vlad, or you don't, you don't need to answer that. But it, you're, you're, you're paying right now, you're paying seventy-four dollars a month. And by having this, you don't have to pay, you don't have to pay for irrigation. You have to pay for the pumps, you have to pay for the depreciation of the pumps. Get it. You got to pay for electricity. But there's no way that this doesn't make financial sense for the, the HOA, for Clear Lake Landing HOA, and makes sense for the city, makes sense for the, all the folks around Clear Lake to reduce the water going into the lake. We know it's got to make a difference because we're now not adding new water to the Clear Lake, um, uh, system. And we're giving you a, a way to, to irrigate your yard with your own, you know, HOA water. So anyway, I, I, you know, I'm happy to meet again with the, the HOA. Uh, but I, I, I just wouldn't need to put down on the record that, that, that there, there is savings to the HOA. There is savings and we know there will be water, less water going into Clear Lake if they're not on city reclaimed water. So.
Well, so, I mean, it's, they're, they're saving what, fifty dollars a month maps, which is a number, but at the same time, their lives and their homesteads are more important than fifty dollars. So there's a balance here that, that we need to take in. There was a couple of questions that were asked, I think, do need to be addressed. Why, I guess, walk us through why not option two for this? Which would be to pump service water to North Shore Reclaim Water Treatment Plant?
Well, I'm not sure. I wasn't involved in the project, so I just.
Well, just from your knowledge and you, you've been here years, uh, just from experience, walk us through just what that looks like if we were to choose that option.
So we're talking about option two?
Correct.
Well, of course, they will have to be permanent as well, right?
It would go under our permit though, correct? That would be our permit.
They will have to go through our permit, right? Correct. So that will involve additional treatment, uh, additional filtration, additional pump station, like similar to what we're doing at Border Lake. Uh, it's a way longer route to go down. Basically, it will follow the same route that was used for the emergency pumping to go down the road. I don't recall the name of the road. I think it's Avian Point Drive, maybe like that. And then come down to Lust and then we'll have to go under four twenty-nine and somewhere into the canal where at that point it can potentially be pulled into the pump station to be taken into the, into the North Shore facility.
So wouldn't, just to clarify it again as a layperson, it does, does it have to go through specific piping? Or can this go through, um, inlets and, and burns and things of that nature to get there?
In this case, it will have to go through a piping.
Okay. Do we have any of that infrastructure in place that we could tap into now?
No, because that's why the emergency pumping was done pretty much following the same route. Because we didn't have any, that was the shortest distance.
Okay. So if we did want to do it, it'd be a high, a high cost. I mean, this comes down to dollars and cents.
It will be significantly higher.
Okay.
I think it's, I'm sorry, he's not finishing.
I just want to finish the, the gentleman asked a few questions that I just think are important. So, um, who, who would be maintaining the system if we were to do option one? We discussed that it would be the HOA.
Yeah, so this, this is an interesting question because all private infrastructure is typically maintained by the HOA. In this particular case, it's a gated community. So they're responsible for the roads, they're responsible for the stormwater system. They're not responsible for the utilities because those pipes are on and the utilities are provided by the city. But let's say a failure occurs on the road or a failure occurs on the, any portion, any segment of the stormwater system, there will be cost, there will have to be covered by the HOA. The HOA will be responsible for that. That's on the plat, that's how the plat is recorded. I, I didn't did research before this. I was just looking at that while you guys were discussing it. So it will be the same thing with any other private, uh, segment of the infrastructure within that particular, let's say.
So you're kind of equating to private streets, kind of a private utility is, is what this is suggesting?
Yes.
Okay. So, so they would be exclusively, uh, and responsible for maintaining the system. Um, and then you just had concerns over the permit.
Uh, yeah.
Uh, concerns of, of what was in the permit itself. What really bothered me or struck a chord in me with what you said was that you're scared to have your grandkids go out, uh, to go play in the backyard. That's really concerning to me. Is there a way that we can work with staff to get some of those trees taken down? Assuming that they will, the HOA agrees to that, to, to mitigate the safety issue that is occurring there? Because does it come down today, tomorrow, will it fall down in a month? That's a really big safety concern for me. I, can, I mean, yes, I guess the answer is, I'm sure we could do that. Would the council have, be willing to look into that? Um, that's a big safety concern. To not have kids be able to play in their backyard, that's, um, that, that really struck a chord in me. That, that really bothered me there. So I don't know if the council has a, a say, you know, a desire to do that, to take care of some of these trees.
Yeah, first of all, it'd be a legal question because we're talking about now city employees going on private property.
Correct. Gated community. So I, I guess, I think we're kind of having an open discussion that should have been more so of a private discussion with the HOA, with the engineer, like a workshop with them to figure out which option they want to choose. So I think we can go back to the drawing board because we really don't, they, this is the first time from my understanding, they're hearing about some of this. So it needs to be presented in a different form, I think, so they can really understand kind of what the options are. And I was just thinking, it's so many options and I think this limited time is just not the setting for it. I think we need to have the opportunity to sit out with the engineer, sit out with the HOA, sit in with the different members in the community and that they decide what's option is best for them.
Yes, and that, that was kind of the intention of the presentation, to give you an update of where we are. Not asking you to make any decision on anything because ultimately, yeah, that needs to be discussed again with the HOA.
But, but from my understanding, they're saying that they wasn't aware of this presentation. So I think it's just important.
Yeah, lack of communication here, it seems like a real big issue.
So I think it's important now for us, just I guess, schedule a meeting so that we can kind of with them, so they can figure out what's best for them.
And we have no problem. Everybody there is going to the lake, all my friends. They were signed to commit tomorrow. I would have it on their desk. We pick those trees down.
I mean, it's somewhat of the right of entry that we have for the Border Lake Project. Same concept of having pumps on private property. Um, and again, I mean, it's not just, the trees aren't a big deal, but it's the insects that are now sitting there, the alligators that were referenced as well. I mean, it's, it's a, there's a lot going on there of just safety, snakes. Yeah, just a lot, a lot going on there. So, I mean, can we, would the council have a, would we be open to doing a workshop to have this dialogue? Because it seems like this was just really premature.
I think we do need a workshop, we just kind of dive into it, absolutely.
Yeah.
Let's do it.
A workshop.
Okay. All right. So let's, let's get a date.
Date for the workshop.
Let's, let's do a, let's figure out a specific date that we can do and then confirm with the HOAs. Or maybe do two, two or three different dates that we can all work. And then the HOAs can let us know what works best for them.
So we got the council.
Talking about all four HOAs, right?
Is it?
Three, three.
Three HOAs.
And a private.
And a private, yeah. So we got some, yeah, so we can get around together.
But the problem, and not that, not that it doesn't affect everyone, but we're only kind of charging or saying that we would charge one HOA though.
But.
Well, there's, there's all. No, well, it doesn't make sense for the smaller community. Then the price of the pump and the, and the infrastructure wouldn't make sense to do that one. The reason we just picked Clear Lake Landing is because it's a bigger, the pump station is a pump station. For the smaller community, it's only forty homes. It, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be financially feasible for them to do that. This one, because of the larger community size, it makes financial sense for them. So, but.
That doesn't seem like it's their opinion that it makes sense for them. Which again, let's, so let's, so what's some dates that, that makes sense for everybody who's out of town?
We got a, we got August the sixth, we want to do it at five o'clock. You want to do it before, you want to do it on the twentieth of August before city council?
Mm-hmm.
We have a CRA meeting that day.
Oh, CRA meeting.
At six.
The twentieth, we have the CRA meeting.
We'll just spin an hour, we do it an hour, we'll do it at five. Knock off.
I said we knock it out.
We do. Five o'clock on the twentieth?
The twentieth, we have the CRA, we have the council meeting.
No, because I don't want to rush this because unless we're going to have new information now, which I don't think we're going to at that point.
It's twenty, so the next one will be September.
I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be a meeting night or day. We need August thirteenth, August twenty-seventh, August twelfth, August fourteenth, twenty-first.
All right, so I'm, I'm out of town the fourteenth and fifteenth and the eighteenth.
And the eighteenth, okay. Let's, can we aim for August thirteenth as one of the dates, like six P M?
Okay, that one's open for me.
And then, and then send a memo out to all residents and let them know what our goals are here and that this will be an open forum for them to discuss options.
League of Cities, I've got.
Oh, it is, it is. It is League of Cities.
It is League of Cities.
I thought it started at fourteen.
The League of Cities. Oh, that is League of Cities. Yeah, we'll be at the Florida League of Cities.
It starts on the thirteenth?
I, I do, I'm on the League of Mayors.
Starts on the fourteenth, but he'll be.
I go on business as well.
Yes, for the board. What about?
Uh, what if we do like a week? Which Tuesday, the twelfth? Yeah, absolutely.
That worked.
What, the twelfth, Tuesday?
It works. Works for you?
Tuesday.
It works.
Okay.
That's perfect, yeah. And let's just make sure obviously that we reach out to the residents and, and get them confirmed as well.
Mayor, we have a planning commission meeting that night.
Oh, that's right, P and Z.
So make it six thirty, that's even up no more than an hour. Bobby, what does that look like? It's, you know.
You say in the meeting.
Bobby's saying there's a heavy agenda that night.
It is a heavy agenda.
Yeah. P and Z, I forget that, they have theirs on Tuesdays.
So that won't work. Hmm, let's do that Monday, the eleventh. Can we do the eleventh? What about the eleventh?
I'm good.
The eleventh? Well, that works. The eleventh.
The eleventh, August eleventh.
August the eleventh.
It's a Monday.
A Monday?
Not yet.
Not yet. August eleventh?
Six?
Six. Six o'clock.
Can you come up here and ask quick, just so everyone can hear all your residents that are watching, please?
Just for clarification, so we're going to do August eleventh, six o'clock. Are we bringing Clear Lake Estates, Clear Lake Landings, the boards only? Are we doing the community? How are we doing that?
Community.
Both communities?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Are we going to have a plan of action prior to that? Or we're just going to sharpshoot it when we all show up there?
I guess that's the, that's the issue. I mean, I, I don't know internally if we can start having staff come up with some, just taking feedback from tonight, maybe coming up with some additional options and then maybe narrowing those down, giving us prices, timelines, things of that nature.
I, I think.
I, I'd just like to see a couple of options besides everything being put on Clear Lake because we're one hundred and forty-two and, um, we're not smaller or anything like that. I don't think it's too fair for the residents, uh, our residents over there. Um, so I, I'd like to see two or three different options brought up before the eleventh, if, if possible. And then that way we can share that out and then we all know what we're sitting down to. And then we can have an open discussion from that off of the two or three options.
Springboard off that. I think that's actually a great idea. That you all probably meet prior, what, what are your thoughts? So that way on the, um, I guess with the HOA president and the engineer and maybe the mayor, you guys kind of sit down prior to that meeting so we can kind of have an agenda in regards to some additional options.
The last meeting I had it was, this is the way it's going to go and this is it. I'm not moving. So I'd like to be able to have two or three options that's fair for everybody, including Clear Lake Estates, even though that we're being forced the burden of paying for everything. I, I want to see a better option.
You're not being forced to, I mean, it's a little, that's a little mischaracterization. It's not.
However you want to take it, Mayor, I understand.
Huh?
I sat at your desk, I understand, however you want to take it.
No, no, but is, I mean, are my numbers wrong or?
No, your numbers look great on paper, but you're forgetting the thing about maintaining it. Is it going to last five years? Is it going to, nobody knows. So I.
I agree with that.
I probably won't live in Clear Lake Landing in ten years. So I want to make sure that when I no longer the board president, the residents that are there are not putting a financial burden in there. Don't go, hey, that guy, remember when he went up? I don't want that. So I'm going to make sure that we have to maintain it. Is a pump going to last three years under Florida's weather and harsh winds? Five years? What's the electric bill each month? Nobody knows. So, yeah, you're seventy-five dollars when you're saying, yeah, they're going to save some money. It looks great, but we got to put up, we got to maintain the fence, we got to insure it, we got to maintain it. We got to pay an electric bill. We got to fix it. What happens if it blows over? We got to pay another four hundred and fifty now in five years, that might be a million. We have no idea. So there's a lot of uncertainty. So when you're doing your drawing board, it looks great. Like, like I said, it's lipstick on a pig. We got other things that we have to worry about as well. That's what I want to focus on, on, on the five. I like to have, I, I do everything on five-year, ten-year, fifteen-year plans. I like to do that with this project as well. All right? Thank you all.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you all for being here tonight, too. I really appreciate the feedback. It's helpful.
Okay. Consent agenda, we got five consent agenda items. Does anybody need to pull them?
So did we decide all this on August?
August eleventh.
Yep.
Okay.
Anybody need to pull any of the consent agenda items? From public heater, okay. Not look for motion to approve the five consent agenda items? Count motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed motion carries in. Next up, street closure. Cindy.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Cindy Edwards, interim Parks and Recreation Director. I'm here tonight to request the authorization for street closures for the one-year anniversary of Just Like Mamas. They're celebrating with a car and Jeep show. The street closures are requested in the special event permit applications for one-year anniversary of Just Like Mamas Car and Jeep Show event. The event date requested is August second, two thousand twenty-five. The special event permit application was submitted for the event. The requested street closure is on Fifth Street from Park to Central Avenue with access to the Fifth Street parking lot and the community center. Road closure to begin at twelve P M on August second, two thousand twenty-five and reopen at eight P M. The permit has been reviewed by staff, including the police and the fire department, and are recommended for approval. Uh, the DRC recommended approval of the special event permit application along with the provided street closures at the July ninth, two thousand twenty-five DRC meeting with the contingency that they would make changes to the map showing the ingress and egress, which they did. Um, the map and the COI has been received and we had final approval this morning at DRC. So the staff recommends that city council approve the requested street closure as part of the one-year anniversary of Just Like Mamas.
Any questions from staff?
I just got a couple of questions. Thank you so much for, for providing this info. Mrs. Bartman, congratulations on one year. It's very exciting. We did, to confirm, we have received insurance.
That is true. Yes, we have.
And then the only other one was similar to what we do for, um, the, the Fifth Street Market.
Yes.
We provide off-duty officers or overtime officers out there at no charge to the market. Is that something we can do as well for this event? Because I remember when we originally had, uh, approved the market, it was, we, we had questions of, will this be, these same terms or something similar be provided to other vendors in the area? And the answer was yes at that time.
Yeah, so Commissioner Ernesta, um, the market on Fifth Street event, uh, does have a special event license, uh, agreement in place. And what we did with that event, uh, part of obtaining obtaining that special event license agreement, we did require basically the event to have a proof of concept. So, um, Propagate did start the event on their property. They then moved over to the parking lot for a little bit. And they ran that event for quite quite some time before we did enter into that special event license agreement.
Okay, but I mean, the it's one, it's a very similar event with similar vendors. There's and to confirm, there's no charge. We're not you're not doing any charging at all, other than the vehicles to be there. If you can't step up to, I'm so sorry to ask. Thank you so much, just so everyone can hear.
Yes, the, um, the vehicles, they, um, they're getting like a trophy. It's literally a show, so not the spectators. Originally, we had the spectators, but we realized, um, last week when Cindy and, um, Lexi from the city talked and we talked about it and that would be difficult, and my sister came down last week and seen how it would run into the other businesses and we didn't want the spectators to be charged because we couldn't contain that. So, um, but there, it's free. It's free for the public. It's free for the spectator. It's just not free for the vendors and the cars that's entering.
The the car show contestants. Okay, understood. Thank you for for clarifying that. And I think, again, I the the point when at least my, listen to you, but when when I approved, um, uh, or at least voted for for the market and for that license agreement, that it was, it's activating a downtown space and we want to promote that and not hurt vendors from coming down. We want to make it a vibrant downtown and help businesses with that. So I think this is right in line with that same thing, to be able to offer, especially since they're not charging at all, to offer that same, uh, concept and those same certain things that that we can do. And I think that the best way we can do it is with those overtime officers, at least take that, um, cost from them.
I agree. I I would I would say thank you for that because that would be, I mean, this is gonna be a big event. I say because, and I was, I I'm thankful to my neighbors, um, Propagate, um, Three Odd Guys, even the smoke shop and all of the other neighbors that my son went around and asked for their permission and their approval and they gave it like willingly. And, um, and it was great because I, just because this is my first year and, um, I have had some issues, but at the same time, I feel like they all can eat. And I said that in my letter, my thank you letter to them, I said, let's eat. So that means, I mean, for those that don't know, that everybody can profit from this event. And so Right, so even if it's not this, um, on August second, somebody might not, might have not known that Propagate was there. Or Halls on Fifth was there, or, you know, but they can come back to the neighborhood and know that Just Like Mamas there, you know. And they might not even come for Just Like Mamas, but just the car show and now they know that we're all there. So it's 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 beneficial to the city. It's beneficial to the businesses in the city.
Rightly, on Main Street, what did did we, or Cindy, who? Did we, did we charge them for off-duty or what was?
Yeah, so the, uh, the only event currently on Fifth Street that is has off-duty officers included is the market on Fifth with the special event license permit. And again, the, uh, the market on Fifth was required. They did run the event on their own to to kind of prove that the event was a success and then approached the city and and talked about partnering in that way.
Wish I hear you on that. Absolutely. No, I I get that. I just think it it's definitely beneficial. Again, it's activating a space downtown and making sure that we're marketing other businesses as well. It's not just gonna be Just Like Mamas that wins from this. It's gonna be all of our uh, Fifth Street merchants. Uh, so this really is, it's an affordable thing that we can help so that more projects like this can continue to happen to support these small businesses and and help the growth in this area.
How how many officers are we applying?
Well, I I'm I'm okay doing it. I just, but we need to be, we gotta need to be consistent. If we didn't charge, we charge Main Street, now we're gonna let Just Like Mamas get it for free. I mean, I think if you want to set it up as in October, we do it, we put it as a as a part of our budget. You know, fine for next year. So on on year number two, she wants to come back and do it. Yeah, everybody has the same opportunity for a free, free, um, uh, off-duty officers. I mean, would that be a?
And if you do recall, at the budget workshop, we did discuss the proposed nonprofit grant, uh, community event, cultural event program. Uh, that that would be eligible for this funds. Now, it it, she'd have to partner with a nonprofit organization to to, uh,
Yeah, I think that's a different beast. I think that's a a different avenue of funds that I don't think would apply to this. So I think, again, I I think it makes sense. Again, it helps the downtown businesses do what they need to do and they're being marketed. There it's walking traffic. That's the whole point of this downtown that we've been trying to create is walkability and these events, we need to help those as much as possible because it benefits everybody down there. So if we want to refund Main Street, let's do that, but I think this makes sense to help with this because it's bringing such a diverse, uh, uh, new event downtown.
So is it possible to, because I know that's a that's a special license event that we have like on an ongoing basis. So can we create a process where they can apply for temporaries, like, like, you know, annually? When they're having like a one event where they can actually apply for it, where it's not a continuous. I think that's kind of what
Yeah, so so I would just, staff would need direction on what you would like us to qualify those events for. So how would we qualify?
I mean, I think it's as simple as anything on Fifth Street around these merchants. That's benefiting everybody that they should benefit from. I mean, again, we're trying to activate this space, really create something incredible. This is a very affordable way to ensure that these events keep coming because that's what we want. These are how all of our businesses are going to be successful.
So I guess we can say some, just boundaries, I guess, which is trying to say which businesses would can be able to qualify for this temporary.
How, so similar to how we've kind of presented some grant opportunity programs, maybe there's an appetite to explore an additional avenue.
So that way can kind of help.
We would want to, staff would need some clear direction on how to approve which.
I don't think that's hard to to navigate and and I'm I'm, I think that's great to do to down the road. Moving forward to get some clarity and and make sure everybody doesn't have any ambiguity on who qualifies and who doesn't. But I think for this one, especially again, we're celebrating a one year of a restaurant in a very tough economy. Let's promote this. Let's, this is a very small number to assist everybody to benefit from this.
So I, that'd be at the pleasure of the board. I can't waive a fee.
So I I would move to approve this road closure and approve, uh, us funding the uh, off-duty or overtime officers as well for the event.
How much are we talking about?
Two, fifty-five dollars now? Fifty-five times two times eight? Eight hundred eighty dollars.
Especially if we're gonna be moving towards a a process where we're gonna be allowing this, I think.
Yeah, so that's a move and then a second.
So where does that expense go to? Because for off-duty, we have to pay. We have to put those funds back in the
So for a typical special map permit process, it goes through roll call. Um, if we change this up tonight, I'd get with the police chief and we'd have to fund it out of the city budget.
That's already budgeted for overtime and things of that nature.
And I I just want to add that I honestly, I was so nervous. So much stuff done happened to me. I mean, it has nothing to do with anybody on the board, but so much stuff done happened to me. And I'm not even gonna say it's personal, but it has happened to me before because the first time I ever stood up here, I was complaining about, um, Dave Witty. And, um, so I just want to throw that back out there on record, um, that I was wrong during that time. And so much stuff has has happened to me. So for you, even if you guys don't approve that, for you to even bring it up to, um, propose something like that, to pay for the off-duty officers, that's that means a lot to me. Because I mean, I'm just a single, I mean, I'm married, but that's here and there. Um, pretty much single mom that's raising raising three children. So I mean, that has raised two and still raising one right now. So I'm I'm just a single, you know, business owner, small black business owner. And I hate to throw race out there, but it's true. I am, so.
Chief, there's no need to speak. Uh, I have a nonprofit. They'll take care of the police for you. No problem.
Alright, here we go. So we got a motion to approve the road closure of street closure for the one-year anniversary of Just Like Mamas and Jeep Car Show. And a motion by Commissioner Nesta, uh, second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Border Lake.
And then we will, before you start, we will be having some type of approach for people to apply for that or or create boundaries or parameters for what that looks like moving forward, correct?
Uh, I'll get together with staff and we'll work on getting a proposal together for the next budget workshop.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, it's me again. Uh, for the record, Vladimir Simonovsky, Public Works Director, um, good evening, Mayor Commissioners. What we're bringing in front of you tonight is a request to approve staff to continue the rental of pumps for the Border Lake pumping project through the end of the authorization period. Uh, the Border Lake Temporary Flood Mitigation Plan started on June twenty-sixth of this year and is performing as anticipated. Lake elevation reductions are progressing according to engineering projections with target levels expected to be achieved in all lakes. Um, as of today. Uh, this was approved through a budget amendment by the city council on March fifth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, we have additional funding in the amount of twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars from the Stormwater Fund to complete the first pumping phases. This current authorization allows the city to be on the residents' premises until August thirtieth. The city staff requested council, the city staff requests council approval for additional funding to maintain the rental of pumping equipment through the end of the authorization period in the event of unexpected severe weather events that could compromise recent progress. If the rental company removes the pumps, it will be difficult to set them up again and complete any additional pumping by the end of the period of August of thirtieth due to availability. Would also have to pay for the mobilization and setup costs all over again, and any additional funding needed will be covered by the Stormwater Fund. So that's our request for tonight.
Before jumping this, did we do public comment on the last business item? So we should probably go back to that correctly.
Anybody wants to come up and speak about the road closure?
Don't be so excited about it.
I'm all in favor of everything being fair and equitable. And what we do for one city business, we should do for another city business. There should certainly be no favoritism. However, can someone perhaps remind me why I have some memory of CRA funds being used for off-duty officers? I remember seeing invoices that CRA funding was used for road closure for some of these events.
Virginia Street. Palm Vista Drive, Pop, Florida. I, I'm a little disappointed, um, about why it was such a discussion item about whether the city would pay for the officers. I I personally know the challenges of one year that uh, Just Like Mamas has been open. I don't know all of them, but I've seen some of the challenges and, um, you know, I'm sitting over there, fifty dollars for times four, times two. We really gonna divide over that? We can't, the city can't find that money? When you can find money to put everywhere else? I mean, why does the commissioner gotta come up with it? Why does that have to happen? That's just a shame to me that, um, there was even a discussion about who's gonna pay for that. Come on. I mean, the restaurant is right there in the middle of Fifth Street. It's in the middle. And she's trying to bring different clientele into the place so that the other business and everybody else is here, they agree? But the city's gonna argue over paying for the police officers. Thank you, Commissioner Smith, for stepping up. But it really should be eggs on y'all face about why the city can't pay for that. He shouldn't have to go with his nonprofit to pay for. Why can't the decision be made now to reverse that and get the city to pay for the officers? Tell me why? Why? What what's the reason why we cannot get the city to pay for two officers? Fifty-five dollars for four hours. I was a math and computer science major and I calculated that pretty quick. And so dropping a bucket compared to the budget that I sat there and Boise Idaho and looked at online of the money that's available in this city. Now, I don't get upset real easy, but this really set on my nerves because I watched her. I watched her for one year, people beating her down, and she come up anyway. I watched her when she let the homeless people come in to eat and got opposition from. So please reconsider that. Take the burden off of him and let the city do what it's supposed to do. Do the right thing for change. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Sylvester Hall, Rock Springs Ridge. Uh, Mayor, I'm gonna keep beating you up on that decorum up there when you, when when people up here talking, just look like you're interested. Even if you're not, just look like you're interested. I don't care what you're looking at, sir, but that's disrespectful. It's you up here talking to somebody and we don't, we teach our kids to have better eye contact than that. So act like you're interested. There's only two, 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 uh, two days out of the, out of the month. Act like you're interested, even when you're not. And here's the thing, for everybody who's sitting out there, remember, four years, Mayor, and you remember the day I came back because I told you, I'm back. Because we got that history and you know the history that I'm talking about. But Commissioner Alexander, uh, Smith, I was sitting back there, I'm like, I'm watching the mayor facial expression. Clearly, he don't want to support it. Because anybody who sit back there like I did for the last four years, you'll know when the mayor want to support someone, when he don't. You don't know who he likes and who he don't like because he don't have a poker face. And that's why I try to tell y'all, and when you, when you're talking about leadership, setting the example. When I talk about public safety, you guys are the front line. When we talk about downtown growth, businesses come here for our support, trying to increase our downtown to look like the Beverly Hill building. When you compare it to some of the other surrounding communities. Every election year, we'll have to talk about downtown, the things that we want to do. After that election year go by, I I haven't seen that one building go up downtown. And as I told you before, if you close your eyes and look like forty years, that downtown almost looked the same forty years ago. Why? Because certain people have certain vision, and if you don't fit in their vision, you don't get a seat at the table. Commissioner Becker tried to come in and promote that growth. Well, if you don't fit in my culture, no, I'm not gonna listen. And that hurts the city. That hurts the residents. And if you don't know the big picture, how you gonna understand the issues or the or the or the complications that your decisions that you're making when you don't understand the big picture? If you don't understand how to be a parent, you would think it's okay to go smoke weed with your with your kid because you don't understand the big picture. And so if y'all don't understand the big picture of your seat, what you're doing for the city and the responsibility you have, you need to relinquish that seat. Because as we see now,
Thank you.
It's life-adapt situation on some of the decisions that you make for the residents. Thank you.
Anybody else? Go back to the most, we had a motion by Commissioner Nesta, second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Alright, Vlad, back up. Sorry.
Do we go through the same request again?
No.
Okay.
So start wherever you were.
Yeah.
Not sure where you were.
Yeah, so the request is to approve staff to continue.
Yeah, so any questions for Vlad?
So we have, uh, write-of-entry forms that were forwarded to us. We have some that were presented in March. Or I guess signed in March. And then new ones, I guess, that were signed in June. Who got the signatures for these write-of-entry forms?
I think the reason for it was, uh, those that were in March and those that were in June. The June ones were, previously they were signed by the, by the renters. Not by the original owners of the property. So that was the question that came back from the Water Management District that they wanted the owners actually to sign the write-of-entry.
Well, understood. Who got these signatures? Who went out and got these signatures?
I believe that one.
That was it.
Yes.
So the mayor, you went out to go get these as well?
Yes.
Okay. Both, both of these, so the March and the Junes, you went out to go get these?
I didn't get the June ones. I got the March ones. Some of them, I didn't get them all.
Who got the June ones?
Don't.
He got those. Okay. So the June ones don't seem complete compared to the ones that we got in March where there's driver's license numbers, proper names in there, things of that nature. It's not, they don't match the same, one versus the other. So who, I guess, accepted the new ones that aren't complete versus the ones that were complete previously?
I don't know.
The driver's license numbers on those forms?
Correct.
And they were redacted before they were given to you?
So these are again, the new ones don't have this, so these aren't complete forms is my concern. And then there's some addresses that are part of the original stack, and there's new addresses that are part of the new stack. So inconsistencies on new forms there. Why did we take some out and then add some?
I guess the question to the attorney, is there a, um, is these forms still considered valid without the driver's license on it? Or does it really matter?
The form had nothing to do with, with valid. It only had to do with St. John's Water Management wanted them.
Correct.
Did they accept these forms?
They were accepted by the water.
Yeah.
And the permit was issued based on that.
So it's
that, that was a condition for the permit, so the permit was issued based on that.
So they requested these updated forms then? They're the ones who have requested the updated forms?
Correct.
Okay.
And they accepted them.
So what it looks like too, in comparing the signatures from the old ones to the new ones, they look lifted uh, from the original forms. So it, it, again, they, they're incomplete and they look lifted. So I just want to make sure the homeowners that did sign these understand that they have an extended date to them now as well. So I just, again.
If you've got concerns and you can vote against it, then that, that would be fine.
I just want to make sure we're not getting ourselves into an issue that somebody says, I didn't know that you guys extended it. So we have, do we have confirmation from all these? Home, like if I go to their house tomorrow, they're gonna say, yes, I understand that it was extended till August thirtieth?
I don't know.
Excuse me?
I don't know.
How did we get these signatures then?
I don't know. I didn't do it. I mean, it was Don that, that got the signatures.
Yeah, I'm not sure about the one from March. I don't have a copy of that. Those that I have here with me, they're all till August thirtieth of this year.
Yeah, those are the new ones.
Okay.
The old ones don't. And again, there, there, there's one that's twenty-six oh eight Big Lake Lane, I think it is. That's on the original one, so from March. That is not part of the new ones. And then there's a new one, twelve fifty Piedmont Waikama Road, that's not part of the old ones, but it's part of the new ones. So I just, again, I just want to make sure that we're not getting ourselves into trouble at all. Or I guess why is there an inconsistency with those as well?
I don't know.
Okay. Well, this was your project you've been pushing, pushing, pushing. So surprising you don't have that detail there.
Okay, any other questions for Vlad?
See, just not a good answer. Got it?
I just, I just, for clarification purposes, they did accept these forms?
Yes.
Okay.
And the residents are aware of the extension?
I asked that and the mayor said he has no idea.
Well, I wasn't there. I don't know. I didn't, I didn't get their, their affirmative answer. I mean.
And so, but we're asking for a vote to extend, to have, to approve the extension.
Right.
But we haven't, we don't know if the residents are aware of it.
Yes. St. John's has signed off on it. That's, St. John's is the only one that, that matters. They're the ones that told us that we needed, we needed the homeowner forms when and then we found out that there were a couple of them that were rentals and we had to go not only get the, the tenant, but we had to get the homeowner to get the sign off. So that was part of the reason it took extra time. And then when we found out we had to add the church, then that took some extra times, which I had to run them down, trying to find a church that didn't have any and not a phone number, not an email. And it was, that was a, you know, took, took a while. So between that and Lumen, it was, um, that's what took the, the bulk of the time trying to, what, what put us back.
Yeah, and, and the Lumen write-of-entry is good for three hundred and sixty-five days, which technically will come to
Yeah.
June nineteenth, I believe, of next year.
Well, I just want to make sure. I think, yes, St. John's is important, but I want to make sure the residents are aware too that we're extending this. So again, that, those are my, that's my question. I just want to make sure that they are on board as well. That was my only question. Our residents are important and keeping them informed is important. So I just want to make sure that they truly are the ones that signed these. So that, that's my questioning, and that's why I'm asking it. I want to make sure our residents are informed. We already had that issue tonight of lack of communication with HOA. So again, we're having issues with that again. So as long as you guys say these are good and we don't have any issues with these at all and the residents are aware of them, then we can move forward.
Okay, any other questions? Anybody from the public who should speak on this one?
Aubrey McKemme, three six oh three Golden Gemwood. I'm a little bit concerned that these forms don't match. If we've got addresses on one set of forms that are slightly different, even if it's only on one form on the other side, does that mean that we've operated in somebody's yard without permission? Did we set up a pump in somebody's yard that we didn't know about? Is there any potential liability if there's an accident because we set up or we haven't set up without permission?
Sylvester, you constantly hear me say when we normalize the abnormal, we desensitize the truth to the point that truth doesn't matter? I'm just trying to think to myself, why is the mayor out getting signatures? It's something that seems abnormal to me that the mayor be out getting signatures. So we desensitize it like it ain't nothing. Then when we question things like laws matter, procedures matters, rules matters, accountability matters. You remember those? Character matters. But it reminds me a story I heard in church the other day. There was a scorpion that wanted to cross the lake. And he came up to a frog and he asked the frog, he said, will you take me across the lake? And the frog said, sure, I don't mind, but you're gonna sting me. You're gonna kill me. And the scorpion said, nah, I wouldn't do that because we'll both die. So the frog and his better judgment agreed. So he hopped on the frog's back and they started moseying across the lake. Sure enough, halfway across, the scorpion stings. And the frog looked up at the scorpion and said, why did you do that? Now we're both down. And the scorpion said, I just couldn't resist. That's what I do. So I don't blame you guys because of the moral of the story. Even in death, he still couldn't resist doing what he do. Even when things are brought to you in clear vision, you guys keep doing the same thing. Because it's just who you are. But you're not the problem. The problem is everybody sitting behind me and everybody who voted for you without doing any better. And I told the ones that I did voted for, you know who I voted for, and I told you one thing I was gonna do is hold you accountable for doing right by the people. That's my vote that I served twenty-one years and risked my life for, for you to have that privilege. And that's what I do every city council meeting. So if you wonder why I'm here, that's why I'm here.
Anybody else? Okay, not close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the Border Lake Pumping Project.
Well, I just want to say before a motion that I, I will agree to this with the understanding that these are accurate and true. That's the only thing I have to go off is that the residents know what you provided. They know that we are extending this. So I will motion that with that understanding.
Mr. Nesta? Second by Mr. Smith.
I'm reading the write-of-entry. The last, the last paragraph says the write-of-entry will expire August thirtieth. Are we extending it beyond that?
No.
No, the first ones, they had first one signed in March and in May that expired in June and July. Those were originally signed.
Okay. I don't, I don't have those.
No, those were referenced back when we first approved this, and I had asked for copies of these to review them. So that's what this is.
I'm looking at the one dated June twentieth.
Correct. Those are the updated ones. There's original ones though.
Okay.
Anything else? Motion by Commissioner Nesta, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries now. Next up, ordinance number thirty-one twelve. All right, take a five-minute break. He's always the last one and he whines about it. Okay, we, next up, ordinance number thirty-one twelve. Oh, Susan, where is Susan?
I think went to the ladies.
I believe the court would have been to wait for both of us to be at our seats before he started the meeting.
Glad for Susan coming. All right, ordinance number three-one-one-two.
Ordinance number three-one-one-two, an ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida statute one-seven-one point oh-four-four, the here and after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida. Owned by Reed Marvin Wayne and Reed Susan Thomas, located at nineteen-twenty Sheeler Avenue, comprising forty-point-one-six acres more or less, providing for directions to the city clerk severability conflicts and an effective date.
Any changes, Bobby? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one?
Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six, Rolling Hills Lane here in Apopka. Uh, this represents one hundred and fifteen units, represents forty-one students, and again, five of fifteen schools in Apopka are over capacity. School board will not say no unless, as long as they can put a trailer on the property, well, it's an i- issue. We look at the other one hundred and fifteen properties based upon what we talked to, talked about so far. What's the issue? What's going to be the arrangement for streets? What's going to be the arrangement for sidewalks? Can our water system and sewer system handle what they, what they have? Uh, big question. So will there be flooding issues for it? Is that going to be taken care of? Is that all under, under view? Uh, we've got to do better. We need to look at slowing this process down. We've got the tail wagging the dog. The tail being developers. And we're dancing to the developers. We've got to stop this. Someone needs to make a motion today to suspend development. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Not close the public hearing, look for motion to approve or to adopt ordinance number three thousand one hundred and twelve. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Attorney Shepherd, in reference to SB one-eighty, are you reviewing that later or no?
Uh, I am. I have it here.
Okay, I didn't know if it was just for our information, but.
If you want me to jump to the conclusion, you can't do a moratorium because it's against the law. There you go.
Because they made that law from this. Okay.
Okay.
So we're stuck.
Next up, ordinance three-one-one-six.
Ordinance number three-one-one-six, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending chapter forty, fifty-four Retirement Systems by amending Article Four Police Officers Retirement System, section fifty-four dash one-two-seven vesting, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for conflicts and setting an effective date.
Any changes?
No, sir.
All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? If not, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Hall wants to.
Huh?
No.
Look for a motion to adopt ordinance number three-one-one-six. Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three-one-one-three.
Ordinance number three-one-one-three, an ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida statute one-seven-one point oh-four-four, the here and after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida. Owned by Palucci Acres LLC, located on the east side of Vic Road, approximately one-quarter of a mile north of the intersection of Vic Road and West Lester Road, comprising thirty-nine-point-eight acres more or less, providing for directions to the city clerk severability conflicts and an effective date.
Good evening. For the record, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. The request is to annex two parcels totaling thirty-nine-point-eight-five acres into the city of Apopka. Properties are generally located on the east side of Vic Road, approximately a quarter mile north of the intersection of Vic and West Lester Road. The parcels are contiguous to the city limits and are eligible for annexation pursuant to Florida statute one-seventy-one point oh-four-four. The applicant intends to amend the future land use to residential low suburban and change, change the zoning to planned development at a later date. This will be actions that would be taken through the city council. The Development Review Committee recommends approval. This is the aerial photograph of the property. Future land use and zoning maps show the surrounding zoning and future land uses. As I was stating, the Development Review Committee recommends approval. The recommended motion this evening is accept first reading ordinance number thirty-one thirteen and hold it over for second reading and adoption. Uh, myself and the applicant is here, and I believe the applicant has a brief presentation as well.
Okay, any questions for Bobby before we ring up the applicant?
Um, well, just I wanted, uh, that we did, I know I had a meeting with them yesterday and regarding this annexation. And that's it, just wanted.
And also had a meeting as well.
I did.
I did as well.
Okay. All right. Any questions? If not, applicant, I want a short. Short, short, short PowerPoint? Did I say short?
We already met already.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Sal with Shetzenbowen, three hundred South Orange Avenue, Orlando, Florida. Um, thank you so much for your time this evening. I also want to thank staff for all of their help thus far. We've been working, um, consistently with, um, your staff, uh, to work on this project. So I have done, I apologize for the very rough drawing. I did a little hand drawing just to give you a little bit of context of the overall project and then the location of the proposed annexation. The overall project is six hundred and eighteen acres. The proposed annexation is just under forty acres. The, all of the yellow is what is within the city and the, the white is within the county. This is a little bit more of a zoomed in, um, viewpoint for you all to see. We're right off of Vic Road. The red is the annexed property. The yellow properties are the city properties. As you can see, we're very, the, it, it, um, very close. So this is a further zoomed in, um, parcel where you can see that we have a, excuse me, a flag parcel right here that is within the county. And then we have to avoid any sort of, um, creation of an enclave, so it's already existing here. And then we have also proposed a ten-foot buffer area that would remain within Orange County um, to avoid any sort of appearance of the creation of an enclave. The proposed annexation meets all the statutory requirements. Um, we have worked with the county and received written confirmation from them. They do not have any objection to the annexation. We have also worked with the city attorney and he's confirmed he does not have any objection to the legality of the proposed annexation. Um, I'd also like to highlight the fact that the city would be providing utilities to this property regardless of whether the property is annexed into the city of Apopka or if it remains within the county. The property is within the JPA, so it's contemplated to be annexed in. Um, another, uh, note to mention is within the county, the density, um, proposed is four uni, four dwelling units per acre, and in the city it would be three-point-five dwelling units per acre. So the annexation allows for the city to have full control and input over the entirety of the six hundred and eighteen acre project versus most of the project, but then having the county, um, control of this, less than forty acres. So, and with that, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay.
I had, I had a couple of questions. Thank you for taking the time to meet with me and to kind of discuss this project in, in its totality as well as the annexation itself. Uh, the, that strip that you're doing on the bottom, that ten feet to connect Alexandria Place to that flag lot that you were discussing in the middle of the screen there.
Yes.
We won't see that once the development's there. That's more of just kind of paper-wise. Like, there, there's not going to be a fence that's, this is the Apopka side, this is the Orange County side, correct? It, it, this is more just for this.
Correct, but the HOA of the project will own and maintain that, so it will essentially be an extended buffer area that will provide further buffering, so that would actually end up being a thirty-five foot buffer.
Okay, and that was going to be my next questions. Again, and we discussed this in our meeting, the, the, uh, nursery gets to the south of the southwest section of your annexation there. They had concerns of, of just proximity that they may become, thank you, yes, that one, that once homes are built there, that it may become a, they may become an issue and be a noise issue to the, or complaint to the new properties that come in. Um, but you would describe it, there is a driveway there that leads to the flag lot, and then, uh, how fu, how big of a buffer from your property line to?
So it's going to be a twenty-five foot perimeter buffer, which, um, keep in mind, there is no buffer that would be required under street zoning. And then the driveway is fifteen feet.
Okay, gotcha, understood, thank you.
Forty feet between, and then you're at the, just the back of the lot, and then you continue on, so.
Okay, and then this is going to be a PD?
Yes.
Okay, um, the, the reality of it is, is you guys are developing all of this either way. So either it stays in Orange County, you're developing it in a small section, or it goes into Apopka and still being developed.
Correct. This way you all have the input and the control of the overall project.
Be receiving impact fees and things of that nature as well.
Correct, so, yes, and real property taxes.
Right, and then are you doing any, um, right-of-way dedication or anything like that?
We are be, yes, we have proposed and offered to do thirty-foot right-of-way dedications along Ponkin, along both sides of the roadway, along which the Paluchis own. And then we will also be doing right-of-way dedications along Vic Road in accordance with the city's intended design and expansion of Vic Road. So we will be facilitating a lot of the roadway improvements.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Of course.
And what objection did the nursery have?
Sorry, say that one more time?
What objection did the nursery have to your?
I don't believe the nursery had any objection. I believe the nursery was concerned that they would end up being a, um, a concern for the eventual homeowners. But because of the forty-foot buffer, we don't think that there would be any sort of, um, concern. There's subs, there's, there's a significant enough buffer between the nursery and the proposed homes.
And they expressed that to me. I, they, they had reached out and, and said, we don't want to become a now nuisance that is complained about, that we're functioning as a business as we have for decades, and now we're going to be a problem to residents, uh, on the north side, even though we were here first and functioning and zoned properly and all the, those things. So that, that was the concern that they'd brought to my attention.
Yeah, and, and that's a normal occurrence, and that's why I ask, uh, is that developers build next and agricultural enterprise, and then once they're there, then they complain about the business that was there before them. And so, uh, but I guess if you got thirty-five foot buffer, then that's going to help alleviate that problem, so.
For them, that'll actually be a forty-foot buffer, and of course you'll have a fence on the back of the home, so.
Commissioner Velasquez?
No, they had, she had answered all those questions. We, you know, I, I appreciate that Commissioner Nester, Nester is bringing up those questions because they were asked, but at least the public gets to hear.
Okay, Mr. Anderson?
No, we have actually the same question.
Anybody from the public?
Albert McCamie, three-six-zero-three, Golden Gem Road. I've got nothing negative to say about the annexation in this case, although normally I speak against annexation. It is the, uh, city commissioners who and the mayor who can obviously object to annexation. But everything in here makes sense to annex the, the property. There's only one thing that I would bring to your attention. When we annex properties in, we're already short the city staff. Where are we going to get the building inspectors? Where, where, where are the other people going to come when we keep annexing people in? Really, if we want to annex in, and that's your prerogative, I expect you to make sure the city staff's there. I've been looking to have my property looked at from the planning for months. I continuously face delays. I've no idea why I continuously face delays. I've got no idea if it's the city's fault. I've got no idea if it's the plan's fault. But you know what? We as residents in the city who pay our taxes deserve the same service as those companies you're going to annex in.
Rod, come on up.
Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six, Rolling Hills Lane. Uh, again, the concern and with the question with Doc, with, uh, with, uh, Mr. Shepherd as well. Other communities have put a halt, a slowdown on new development. Orange County has created hurdles for developers that slows the process down. We need to look at that. Six hundred and eighteen acres, where you look, well, first, this, this is for just, uh, what it was, how many acres? Neither here, there. It generates a two homes per acre would be twenty-nine students. Again, when you take the six hundred and eighteen acres in simple math, comes out to twenty-one hundred and thirty-six unit times three-point-five, or seven hundred and seventy-six students dumping into our schools. You remember eight, eleven years ago when I started coming here? I'm one of a handful of people that got Kelly Park School because a year after the Wolf Lake Middle Elementary School opened with, opened in two thousand and six, in two thousand and eight, there was forty-six portables on campus. Most of those portals were removed, were removed in twenty-twenty-four. Seven hundred and seventy-six students is get right across the street. Guess what? And then we have to ask the questions about our sewer, our water. We have to look at our reclaimed water. Simple for me. Prior to the suspension of being able to water, my sprinkler system in Rock Springs Ridge shot out three to six feet, was it was supposed to be, ten to twenty feet. This is insane, and then the restrictions come in. I'm riding around, riding around on patrol. All these new developments are watering in the middle of the day. I can't water in the middle of the day. This is crazy. We've got to do better. You need to look at a method to slow this down. We're going crazy and we are not making any headway. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Sebastian, Sebastian, yeah. If I didn't know any better, you know, this, at some point, it's just become laughable, but I, I want to thank you, uh, for your presentation. It's, it's good to see somebody come up and be able to answer questions that is given to them, so thank you for that. The development, uh, I'm all for it a hundred percent. What we need to do, we heard from Clearlink about keep developing and developing and developing, but not putting anything in place. None of you have come up with a plan of action or what can we do? Now, the last time, if you could roll the tape back, for me, it just made common sense. If you're bringing in a new development, everything that city needs to, that community needs to support because that addition, it need to be taken care of right then. If the road need to be extended, if this need to be done, or we need to look at the, how it's going to affect the school system, all of that, put it into play. Come up with a plan of action. So when we move forward, we moving forward in good growth, and we moving forward where, when you get ready to go down Point Can or any other street, Boy Scout, once all the developers are here, now we talking about our infrastructure. When parents got to sit in traffic for thirty minutes to an hour to pick up little Johnny or pick up little Susie. Or now we trying to do construction when you got all this traffic. It don't make any sense, and that's why I keep coming back to you guys to under, for you to understand. You have a position here that you need to take very seriously. When I brought up the fact that we need a, a stipend for you guys, if the mayor makes one-fifty, you should make seventy-five thousand. Because when you're sitting in that seat, when things come to you in this packet, we need for you to go out and vet it. We need for you to go out on location to see how it's going to respect, how it's going to, how it's going to, uh, uh, affect the, the residents. We need all that. We don't want you coming here and as soon as you, the first time you see a packet, it's when it's put before you. And then you got to get up and you got to make a decision, move it on, that's going to affect everybody, not just you, but everybody. So when we normalize the add norm, we decentize the truth. And now we don't even want to do anything about the truth because the truth don't matter anymore. So we go through this dog and pony show for every developer that comes here and want to be a part or want to expand in Apopka. We have to do better, and I commend Mr. Olson for just, you know, tirelessly standing on you guys to do that because soon as he sit down, y'all, next, what's, what's next? Nobody has sit down and tried to come up with a plan of action, even when we come up here and give you suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve ordinance number thirty-one thirteen at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption. Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson? So, got a second by Commissioner Velasquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Can I just mention that Vic Road is being expen, extended? Um, it's on the list for next year, right?
Why?
Whiten, I'm sorry, Whiten.
What's the timeline for that?
To four, um, it's on the list, um.
Yeah.
It should be starting next, next year, I believe it is.
I know it's kind of after the fact, but, uh, that portion from lesser, the, the three portions for lesser down.
I know it's kind of after the fact, but that portion from lesser, the three portions for lesser down, class in eighteen twenty-eight engineering, sorry about that. The portion of Vic Road from Lester South, there was three segments. That was in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. The portion from Lester to Ponkin is in the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. From my understanding, we're trying to confirm that with staff, but my understanding is it got added in. Is that accurate, staff? Please.
Yes. Vladimir Simonovsky, Public Works Director. The three sections to the south, the three phases were approved, well, not yet approved, but they were presented in the last week's budget. So presentations.
So everything south of Lester?
Everything to the south of Lester, correct. The section between Lester and Ponkin has not been considered yet.
So this specific section, though?
This specific section, not yet.
Is not on plan at all then?
Not on the plan right now.
Okay. So this isn't going to be widened, re-strat, nothing?
Well, it will eventually.
But nothing's going to be planned? Okay, so it's only south of Lester, south of this?
From Old Dixie to Lester, which is in three different phases.
Okay, so. We don't, would it be on FY twenty-seven, do we know? Is that, it seems odd that we're not doing that whole road, I guess. Because what's that distance between Lester and?
I believe it's total three miles, I believe, all the way to Ponkin, if I'm not mistaken.
Ponkin to?
From Old Dixie. Yes. Yeah. The major issue that we see right now is between Old Dixie, where a public elementary school is, and Lester Road.
Okay.
So with coming or this develop, again, this development is not going to happen overnight, right? It's going to be a process of probably, look, maybe you can.
They had said seven to ten years in.
Yeah, seven to ten years. Yes. Yes.
Yeah. So, okay, so basically, we need to make sure we're having the Vic Road in our tenure plan, basically?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure that's on our radar in some capacity then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next up, ordinance number thirty-one fourteen.
Ordinance number thirty-one fourteen. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending Chapter Six, Alcoholic Beverages of the City's Code of Ordinances, adding definitions, establishing procedures, requirements, and standards for obtaining an open container permit, setting forth vendor responsibilities, amending Article Four Use Regulations of the City's Land Development Code to clarify alcohol sale restrictions for mobile food vendors, providing for codification, providing for severability conflicts, codification, and an effective date.
Bradley?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, Radley Williams, interim city administrator. I'm back tonight with ordinance number thirty-one fourteen for a first reading of the open container ordinance. This ordinance, the aim of this ordinance is to establish a process in ordinance on how a special man or an entity could obtain a open container permit. We did take it back to the city attorney's office after last meeting to clarify and look at that end section of the original ordinance draft to make it a little more concise and remove any duplications that were present. So I did share that information from the city attorney's office with you all as part of the agenda prep and available for any questions.
Any questions for Radley?
To confirm, this is in, and I'm sorry, I didn't ask this yesterday. This wasn't, this is for the entirety of the city. This isn't CRA, it's not downtown, it's not Northwest, right?
It's correct. This is for the entirety of the city. Correct. And the current ordinance does allow the city commission to authorize open container. There's just no process established in ordinance on how somebody would do that. So the goal of this was to add those steps in the process.
Establish that process.
And correct. It would go through hand-in-hand with our special map permit process, go through the DRC reviews, and then ultimately come to council for final adoption or approval or disapproval.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Any other questions for Radley? Anybody from the public?
Albert McKimme, three six oh three Golden Gem Road. I'm not familiar with exactly what it says in all the ordinance, and it is only a first reading. But it's citywide. Does that mean that we will have a separate ordinance to prevent open containers in our city parks? Do we really want people carrying open containers where their children are playing?
Anybody else?
I really don't have anything more to add than what Abby just said. But what about our churches? What about the schools, school properties are within the city and the parks? And we've got enough challenges in this community without having people walking around with alcoholic on the sideline, alcohol on the sidelines. We already had a shooting at Pop Warner. Thank you.
The biggest question I have, when somebody's walking around with an open container, how we know they're legal to walk around with an open container? So when everybody's walking around with an open container, you got to pull up. Let me see some ID. So that can create a public issue. So all of that I'm asking, is when we do these things, see all the beautiful questions your residents pose to you? These are the questions that you should be asking. These are the questions that you should be sharing with the community. These are some of the things that we took in consideration. And so now that's why we're bringing it to you. But it's always the other way around. You've got your beautiful citizens coming up and sharing information with you. As a leader, everybody in the city of Apopka, that's your resources, Mayor. That's a beautiful thing because you have so much resources if you just only listen and inquire sometimes. That's what good leaders do. You don't have to have all the answers, all the solutions. But in the city of Apopka, what should drive the city of Apopka and what should make it great is because everybody's contributing. And they can see their vision, they can see their input. And that's when you buy into ownership. And that's when you create a great Apopka. Not making it great again, but just making it great. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Virginia Street, twenty-one nineteen Palm Vista Drive. This is just how to get an open container. This is the process, right? That's what we're talking about today, is the process. So if somebody wants to have an event, this is, you would point them to this is the process to how to get it. Everybody should know that. But I can't help but to think that this is coming up for certain businesses. And I'm going to leave it there. That this conversation about open containers is for a certain. And y'all know I'm not a fan of what's going on down here when I see it before my kids and my grandkids. And they pay attention to the meetings. And they say, Grandma, I thought that people couldn't walk around with beer. Grandma, I thought they couldn't walk around with wine. And I said, I know, baby, they just do it anyway. You know, so it kind of sends a message to them that although they see the action that happens here and we vote on it, they still try to figure a way to make it happen their way. So, you know, people doing what they're doing. I just think this is, we're having this conversation to create the process so that certain businesses can do what they want to do. And that's what I'm feeling. I mean, I might be wrong. Prove me wrong. I'll say I'm wrong, but this process to create an open container in our city is something that I don't think the community is ready for right now. I think we got bigger things to be looking at, like water and sewer and all the other stuff that's going on. I don't think this is something we should be putting our energy at. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Anybody else? Not close the public hearing, look for motion to approve.
Before we do a motion, they brought up a couple of good questions. Setbacks for churches, schools. So similar to Fifth Street here, there's some churches within the parking lot itself. Not within the parking lot, but within the surrounding businesses. What are setbacks? What's required? What, can you help me through that?
I want to be dead honest. I don't know what your setbacks are, but this ordinance doesn't address that because what it does, as was stated by Ms. Street, and I'm sure Mr. Williams is going to repeat as well. This is a process by which you apply for a permit, and the permit is guided by what you guys will or won't allow based on the guidelines and the ordinance, which do not get to override things like setbacks in the code. That's not how it works. But what is true is where, in places where you couldn't ordinarily be with an open container, if you're in a special event and you have a permit, this would allow a process for you to get it. And by the way, you had this process before. The difference was it was in two different locations. And what we were initially asked to do is to combine them into one ordinance. And that is why it looked like, but it was not true, that there was a duplication of provisions within the ordinance. But we weren't allowed to change what existed. There was language that read one way in one section and one that read a little bit differently, but definitely differently in another section. And that is why when we were asked to put them together, the question that I got from Mr. Williams in an email was, "Aren't these duplicated?" So we had to go back and look at them and no, they're not. And you should have received an email from Attorney New that explains, "Here's the differences between the two. This is why they weren't initially put together because they said different things. In order to put them together, here's what we're doing now." So that, I assume you all got that email, yes? And so that's the reality.
Okay. And then so the, this doesn't, to your point, for what you just said, it doesn't define those setbacks at all. It's just a runway of how to get this done. So then the enforcement of this, well, more so, that combining was basically, if I remember correctly, it was that the vendor, whomever is who's responsible.
Correct.
Is the responsible party of if this, the provisions are not followed to the code. So it's not necessarily what's in this specific ordinance, but what's in the rest of our code. If it's not followed, it stated that the vendor is the one who's responsible.
That is correct.
So if we or if a resident or whoever finds that somebody is not following the provisions, they, I guess, what's the process there? If somebody says they're not following the provisions of our code, what's the steps then?
Well, I think the chief can answer, but generally speaking, we're talking about a permit. So if they are in violation of the permit and the police are there as they should be in most special events because it's typically required that some level of police is available. I don't know the exact levels, but I know we talked about it early with people with wanting four officers or whatever. And so, and if they observed what would have been a violation of the permit, they can either, I assume this is a police discretion thing. They can either say, "You need to fix this now," or they can shut it down. That's my assumption, but I want to let the chief do the law enforcement thing.
To address a couple of things that you've asked, Commissioner. In our ordinance years ago, the CRA area and the churches have an exemption for alcohol establishments in the distance. That was established. I read the ordinance because there was a citizen that complained about that or reviewed the ordinance, and years ago, that was changed. The square, the footage from where the door of an establishment serves alcohol in a place of worship was taken out.
So there's not a provision that we have within the CRA specifically?
Not within the CRA area. It would apply to everywhere outside of the CRA area.
Okay.
And again, this does not do anything to affect the open container ordinance under Florida statutes. You cannot go outside of this area, and as I explained the last time this came up, last two weeks ago, is this really puts an onus on the applicant to have a map, distinct areas where everybody knows where it's going to be. And when we have events in the city, our policy is that if alcohol is being served, they have to hire two police officers. So there are going to be police officers hired for these events.
Okay. And there's no way for us to, or anybody, the officer, the vendor, or is there, to stop anybody from just bringing their own alcohol into this event, into any event? There, I could bring my own, it could be open, anybody could do that.
You could have your own alcohol right now, sir, as far as I know. I mean, you could have, what, the metal detector is not going to set off a bottle of alcohol. So if you had a small bottle of alcohol in your pocket right now.
But I meant open container wise.
Well.
Specifically to open container. I'm not talking about alcohol. I'm talking about open container.
Well, you have to understand the definition of open container. It's not just an open glass of alcohol. It is an unsealed container. So if you've opened, broken the seal on it, you now have an open container.
I understand.
So you could have one of those little small bottles of whiskey in your pocket that's got the seal broken. Technically, you're in possession of an open container.
Right.
So, no, can we, anybody, prevent anybody from disguising something or bringing alcohol in? Let's face it, kids do it at parties every weekend.
Well, that's not, and it's just more so, I guess, there's no, there's no mechanism to ensure that, I guess, that the vendors that are, that are creating this event, those are the only ones that are serving alcohol, I guess. Is there a mechanism for that?
There's no mechanism now.
I don't disagree. I'm just saying, I'm not saying now, but I'm saying, can we add one? Is there provisions or unique ways to?
I can make a suggestion. I don't think anybody's going to like it, but this is what happens at sporting events all over the country. Randomly, I know for reasons that I can't explain because my wife doesn't drink literally anything, she gets pulled out of the line and they search her purse. I go through the medical metal detector, and as long as they don't detect any metal, I go straight in. But my point being that if you made a part of this ordinance, that people, there had to be a controlled entry and exit, not necessarily the safest way to go, but if you did that and required metal detection and additional security to do purse sacks searches and bag searches, or as for example, it happens at the soccer stadium, can only go in with a clear vinyl bag that can be seen through. There's all kinds of stuff you can do. The question is, what's enough? I don't know, but those are options.
Okay. No, I hear what you're saying.
In scenarios like that, you run into a scenario like we just had with the event on Fifth Street. If there's multiple businesses involved or in an area, you could be restricting people from visiting those by restricting the area. Do you understand what I'm saying or what I'm trying to say?
Well, the area has to be restricted, though. There's a defined area.
It has to, it has to be defined and it has to be marked, but it didn't have to have a fence around it to restrict.
Right.
One, one point of.
And I'm not suggesting that either.
One point of ingress or one point of egress.
Right.
Which would be the only way you could really control it at the end of the day. But, you know, I can't tell you how many people are out here walking around with, you know, their little, what is it, Stanley jugs with alcohol in them. That's just unfortunately the nature of our society.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just trying to.
You know, from my perspective, I think we've done what we can to put restrictions on this. I think it's more restrictive than a lot of them I've seen as far as having to map it out, post it, make sure it's available for our officers to see where the restricted area is and at least be able to enforce it. And obviously, our enforcement means would be to ask them to dispose of it and bring them into compliance with where they need to be before we move on to an arrest.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
All right. Is that it? Looking for motion then to, what is it? To approve ordinance number three one one four at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
This is just for special events, right?
Yes, to clarify, this is a permit process. If the permit were to be approved all the way through the process and approved at council, it would only be valid for the time listed on the permit application. And that's the only time it'd be allowed.
Okay. So. Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez. Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries in amnesty.
Thank you.
Next up, resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five, vacation of the right-of-way, Pluchy Acres.
Remove that.
I know. Anybody from the public want to speak on this? If not, we will close the public hearing and look for a motion to table resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five to the August sixth meeting. Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez. Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries in amnesty. Next up, resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six. A resolution of the City of Apopka amending. amending the budget for fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-four and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Susan. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six, amending the budget in the amount of fifty thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. This is for streetlights located in the East Park, Kelly Park Road, MSBU, special assessment. That includes some of the subdivisions like Bronson and Laurel Oaks and I think it was in Windrose subdivision. We have additional streetlights that were implemented and we do have the revenue to support paying for those streetlight fees.
To confirm, and we discussed this yesterday, this is, we've already realized this revenue.
Yes.
So there's already revenue in this. It's just a.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions for Blanche? Anybody from the public should speak on this one. Not to close the public hearing.
Nope.
Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six, Rolling Hills Lane. Not beat a horse to death, but last year on October first, twenty twenty-four, the first day of the new budget year, we had budget amendments. We've had budget amendments, I believe, every meeting so far. My prediction is that on October eighth, which would be the first meeting you have after the new budget, you'll be starting again with another set of budget amendments. We need to look at, I'd like to see a motion made by one of you to demand a side by side comparison like I sent to you. So you can look, not only you, but taxpayers, but look and see what the trend is and what we're budgeting. And again, I pointed out to you that with the aspect of the roads, eight point three million, three, four million to cover what we have, doesn't cover squat. We need to, you need to make, put that resolution in place or put something in place that we can look at it side by side for your benefit and our benefit. Second on the aspect, I'd like to see a motion to slow development. That's related to what we're doing with our budgets. Next is the aspect, the motion, motion to look at the charter and the land use because those are mechanisms.
Special assessment of streetlights.
This is related because it has to do with money moving around, does it not, Mayor? Thank you. But with, with the aspect of that type of thing, if we put things in places other communities have, we can slow the process down to get our legs underneath us. We're done with, we are so reactive rather than proactive. It's frustrating. And finally, another issue, maybe it's not related to this, but it is, there should be a motion tonight to move prayer and pledge before public comment. Thank you.
This is on the issue of streetlights.
Thank you for that reminder, Mayor, and I stick to the streetlights. We paying fifty thousand dollars for streetlights. And here again, when you present, maybe I missed it, maybe it's in the packet. But how many streetlights are we purchasing with the fifty thousand dollars? What type of streetlights? You know, when, when you bring information to us, you just give us general information. Streetlights? Streetlights, fifty thousand dollars. What type of streetlights? Why did we select those streetlights? What's the benefit for the area? So do anybody know how many streetlights we paying for fifty thousand dollars? Because before you, I was very concerned about the cost of money and what we, what we spending. So now we got fifty thousand for streetlights. How many streetlights? And that's including maintenance for the streetlights or, you know, what, you know, give us some information. So anybody know how many streetlights? That's. Fifty thousand's got to be a deal. Because we're anticipating seventy thousand dollars for just a few speakers in here.
Anybody else? Okay. Not to close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six.
And to confirm, this is an MSBU funding.
Correct.
So it's, can you walk us through just high level MSBU, please?
Basically, we assess the subdivisions and they pay the fee. So that's the revenue there.
It's built into their taxes?
Yes.
Is it paid out of their taxes?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
And then, yeah, we have to pay Duke and they, we get the money from.
So this is a charge to the, the residents or to those neighborhoods, the MSBU. We've received this income.
Yes.
And it'll be paid back out to Duke effectively.
Correct.
Duke owns these lights?
I know they're built, I think so. They're built when the subdivisions are built and approved through the planning process.
Okay.
Okay.
So these are all the lights inside these subdivisions?
Just one neighborhood.
No, it's about three. East Kelly Park makes up three neighborhoods, Mayor. I'm sorry. Yes. Bertle, Path, I probably said, Bridal Path, Laurel Oaks and Windrose.
And this isn't, is this, this isn't for installation of new lights?
No.
This is ongoing maintenance and electricity and.
Exactly. Yes, it is.
It's charged to us. We charge it back to the resident.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Looking for a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six. Motion by Commissioner Anderson. Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. City Council boards, Mr. Nestor, why don't you? Bob, you got him loaded up?
Thank you, sir.
Well, before I start now, I just want to discuss that obviously, as always, my office hours are every Thursday from eleven to one. Here at City Hall, it's an open door policy. Come as you need to. If you want to make an appointment, you can reach out. Happy to do that. And if you're concerned about coming to City Hall, again, completely understand. I've had a lot of people do that recently to reach out and just meet in other places because they're not comfortable here. So happy to do that as well. And then in reference to the invocation and pledge, Mayor, for every meeting last week and for the CRA meeting this week, you put those to the front of the agenda. And again, it's a slap in the face to the residents that you're not doing it at this meeting. So you do that intentionally? That's a question. Are you doing that intentionally to?
It's on the agenda, just like it is.
Well, you did it opposite actually last week where it was on the agenda and you moved it just on a fly. So it was opposite of the agenda. So are we moving it back to where it was, similar to what you did last week?
Just like it is right now.
Well, you didn't do that last week. So again, inconsistency and it's sad that the residents are being attacked only at city council meetings. So I will do a quick presentation of the meeting minutes policy. Again, I was supposed to be on the agenda. Not sure why I wasn't even listed under, just my council report wasn't listed there either. So not really sure why that didn't occur. Is there a reason for that?
You didn't get just the information in time.
You've put many, many, many items on the agenda.
On Friday.
No. The Lumen contract, for instance?
The only one that, we didn't have to, yeah, we didn't have to take that up. We could have let, you know, we just let Border Lake just keep rising and we'd been, I told everybody, that's fine. I gave you the reason why.
No.
You had four weeks to get to this, to this day. So don't, don't talk about.
Well, what's, what's unique is that the difference is that this is not a nine to five job that we do serving the residents. This is a twenty-four hour, seven day a week job that we are nonstop helping and serving the residents. So just because you put in a provision or a policy that isn't even a policy that I've suggested to Mr. Williams to create one, a different policy that would be applied equitably, that's something that needs to be done because you have not done that properly. Thank you for getting that set up for me. I appreciate it. So similar to what we've been discussing in, in many weeks past and years past, there's been a lot of discrepancy on the minutes. And you can see what I have written here. Words that are spoken in this City of Apopka, Council chambers that are recorded and available on the City of Apopka YouTube page are being manipulated, changed and even left out altogether when they are presented in the minutes. So there's been multiple opportunities of this. We've had it for years that this has been occurring. So I, this is just example of our most recent minutes. The ones that I, I do not recommend approving in the current capacity that they are because they're so different than what they are. The first one, Mr. Bell already discussed in the beginning and it, on the minutes, it says, Leroy Bell came up and spoke about nothing pertaining to consent item number three. That's not what happened. That's not what actually occurred. From, these are my words, but from what I understood is he, he discussed decorum. He discussed relationships with the Florida Economic Consortium and he discussed equitability for all the residents. So none of that is in these minutes. And again, it just says Leroy Bell came up and spoke about nothing pertaining to the consent item three. That, that can't be approved. I'll show you the next one on. How do you want to mute this? Appreciate your help.
I want you to do your job, your job that you were sworn to do. Do your job.
Simple question. Are you going to apply it or not?
Question is, are you going to keep your people under control?
I don't.
That aren't, that aren't, that aren't following decorum.
My people, you're the chair of this meeting. If you want me to run it, I will apply the decorum statement equally. You don't apply it. I'm asking you, you read it every meeting, just apply it. Are you going to do that or not?
So, so what you're saying is you want me to take care of your people?
I want you to do your job, your job that you were sworn to do. Do your job. The minutes read, Commissioner Nestor questioned the mayor regarding the decorum statement, why it's not being followed across the board. Mayor Nelson responded requesting that Commissioner Nestor control his supporters as they're the ones being disruptive to the meeting and to the council. And there it says your people, which is important for the next point. Again, and these are just examples from last week's meeting or last meeting we had.
Sylvester, first I want to thank Commissioner Nestor for appointing me to this position. I'm, I want to clear up some. I am not Commissioner Nestor people. I am the City of Apopka people. When I come here, I represent the City of Apopka. I represent all residents. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Nelson, I am your people also. When you're right, I stand with you. When you're wrong, I stand against you. It's just that simple. I belong to nobody and I want to make that perfectly clear from this point out. I stand for righteousness. We all make mistakes. But when we do, we acknowledge them, we correct it and we move on. So don't ever call me Nick's people. Your people. I am your people too. You are my mayor. Thank you. Now I want to clear up some. When I say who made this criteria, you said we all did, we all did. But it's, it's funny that if you made the criteria, some of the questions that you're asking should have been already vetted and done before we got to this stage. And I want to say this. When we look at small nonprofit and Dr. O brought this up, and we're talking about for five thousand dollars during an audit on them, that could cost them five thousand dollars. Here we have issues with the city for hundreds of thousands of dollars and we can't get an audit. Make it make sense. Make it make sense. And so whenever I come to this podium here, I am speaking for the people. It's no personal gain for me. It's about standing up for the ones who can't stand up and speak for themselves, who are afraid to come to this mic. And for the twenty plus years that I served, I put my life on the line for those same people. So when I come here and stand, I'm standing for, for all of them as a veteran and as for a concerned citizen for this area that I live in, my kids live in, my grandkids live in. And I'd be damned if I don't leave this a better world for them than what I had. If I don't do that, I'm a sorry parent. I'm a sorry grandparent. I'm a sorry great grandparent. Thank you.
Just under three minutes, Mr. Hall spoke. The minutes go on to say, Sylvester Hall provided clarification stating that he is not Commissioner Nestor's people. He said he is City of Apopka's people and when he comes to meetings, he represents City of Apopka. He represents all residents. He first started by saying thank you to Commissioner Nestor, not in here. He's asked for clarity on what we were discussing at that time. He was also saying that he's all of Apopka's people and he also brought up the fact that he had audit concerns. So much was missed there in the context of what was going on was missed there. So I won't belabor the point. It's clear that we need a policy to be put in place of how minutes can be done. So I'm asking tonight that we instruct the City of Apopka attorney Cliff Shepherd to draft a policy for city council approval that ensures this manipulation and distortion for political gain at the expense of the residents does not continue to occur in the future. So I will take my seat and we can have discussion on why or why not this makes.
Commissioner Nestor, before you leave the podium, was there a reason why you didn't play clip one?
Please repeat that.
Was there a reason why you didn't play clip one?
Mr. Bell had addressed it, from my understanding, when he came and spoke.
But if I remember what you said, Mr. Bell said was not what is on that video.
It is. And that's why I left it there for anybody that wants to go back, they can watch it. So tonight, it's clear that the meeting minutes just for tonight, from last week's meeting are not accurate. And, and again, Mr. Bell is, he came up and spoke about nothing pertaining to consent item number three. That's not what was said in this room. So all I'm asking is that we as a council, ensure that what we are creating and approving is accurate. That we can look back and anybody that wants to look back at the meeting minutes can, and it's an accurate, true reflection of what occurred in this room. So my ask is for this council to direct Attorney Shepherd to create a minute taking policy that we can all adhere to and there'll be no more ambiguity or questions about minutes in the future.
My ask is in response to Commissioner Smith's question is that we actually play that first recording. Because I just think it's just kind of odd that we only played two. But I will ask that you actually play that first recording as well that you.
You can play it anytime you want. If you would like to play it, feel free. Again, it's not going to show, the minutes don't show what he said at all. Regardless of what.
But it was, but there has to be a reason why you excluded playing that.
Because I said, Mr. Bell, feel free to play it. If you want to play it, feel free to play it, if that's what you're asking. So my ask and my motion is that we, as a council, direct Cliff Shepherd to write a meeting minutes policy. Again, it creates it so that there's clarity, there's no ambiguity, there's no edits made to them that we don't know about or don't see or that's outside of our purview.
See, Susan, when was the last time that I came to you and asked you to do anything with minutes?
So it has happened though. That's the point.
It hasn't happened in the last.
We don't, when, when you guys see the minutes, that's when the mayor sees the minutes.
So when you talk about the political game or whatever.
Asking for it to be just a policy, a policy that's not just hearsay or that this is what we've been doing. It's a policy that we can all follow.
Why don't you bring a policy back to us and then let Cliff take a look at it?
That's what we have Mr. Shepherd for. So I'm happy to, if you want Mr. Shepherd to do it, then let's do it.
No, why don't you bring us back something that we can take a look at, that, that Cliff Shepherd can look at?
Mayor, that's what our attorney is for.
No, I, I know that, but I don't need.
That's what our attorney is for. So as a council, that's what I'm asking. Why not create a materially valuable policy that we can all follow? That there's no ambiguity. Again, that's the whole point. There's no ambiguity at all. It's an easy policy that we can just move forward with, make sure, and the discussion's over then.
Do we, do we have a current policy? We got the minutes?
Policy, we just, we follow what we've always done. And minutes don't have to be verbatim. And, and so the idea of having more in there, I, I think we need to have.
Tell, tell you what.
Have it, have less in there.
Bob, why don't you come down?
We need to put word for word.
Let, let me, Bob, come down and can you play my? Come down and play my video. Can you go ahead and just play, play mine? If you don't mind. So it, you know, just this whole thing about what, what a, what minutes should look like. And I, you know, let me go see, look, look around and find out, see what is out there. And so I, I went to our favorite YouTube and found a, a video I think is pretty accurate.
Well, so this is still mine. You can do this during your. Well, so this is still mine. You can do this during your, a time that is on your agenda.
We're talking about your.
Nope, you, because you didn't put it under my section. You could have easily put that under my council report and you didn't. You didn't put my own report under there. And so you can feel free to save this for your time. Your time's coming.
You got.
Right now it's my time. So I'm asking council to approve, to direct our city uh, attorney to write a policy. This is simple. I don't know what, what the debate is over this. And again, it's not, I'm not saying verbatim. I'm not saying verbatim.
I make a policy and I'll bring it to you guys.
Well, why can't the attorney do it? I don't want to put that on you.
Cause that's what she does.
Is there, is, I think I actually, well, actually want to see the do's and don'ts before we actually, I'm able to vote on that.
Create a policy?
Yes, I want to see the do's and don'ts.
I'll wait for direction. Well, we, it's still my time and, and if somebody else would like to shut, feel free, but I. It's my time and so again, I'm moving that we. Would direct staff in some capacity, whether it's Susan or Attorney Shepherd, because I assume you guys will work hand in hand with that, correct? Mrs. Bone? You, yeah, you guys will work together with that and it wouldn't be, I'm not saying verbatim. I'm not saying verbatim at all. It's just that accurately reflects what's going on here in the room.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
That would allow uh, our city clerk to create a policy.
Correct.
Okay. That I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
This way it's consistent. That's the best way.
Okay, all those.
If she creates a policy, I feel that. Um, we can all follow it. Um, we'll all know when the minutes come, what's being presented.
So you got a motion and you seconded the motion?
Yes.
Okay, got a motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so it's three to two against with, with Commissioner Nesta and. And Velazquez in favor and the three, Smith, Anderson and Nelson in opposition. Okay. Anything else, Commissioner Nesta?
No, that'll do it for now. It's very telling. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Um, yes, um. On Monday I attended a public forum on traditional public education that was held at the Orange County Teachers Union Association Headquarters. And they talked about the bills that have been passed that's affecting traditional public education and taking funding away from our traditional schools. And I think that it's something that um. All elected officials and all the municipalities in the Orange County need to get behind and support them in this endeavor. Uh, at that meeting, there was six state elected officials that were present. But I was the only municipal elected official that was present. And so I think that we all need to get behind and uh, and support this effort, uh, funded being taken away from our traditional public schools and being uh, given to charter schools. Uh, and so we always talking about and Mr. Olson brings it out every time that uh, about school shortages and school overcrowding. And with funding constantly being taken away from public schools, uh, there's no way that we can keep up. And so I would suggest that we get behind it and support that. Uh, that's all I have.
Let me ask you, what meeting was that?
Uh, it was a public forum on traditional public schools that was held uh, at the Orange County Classroom Teachers Association Headquarters.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Velazquez?
Um, well. I just have three things and the first one I, I do have on my list here, uh, decorum. Um, it's been asked even at the public comment. I did get calls from residents that I know personally and they are asking for the invocation and pledge to be. Conducted before the public comment. So that's something that's being not just asked by here on the dais, but it is being asked. By residents that either tune in to us on the YouTube and of course some. Friends that you know, I know, and they are asking about the invocation and pledge. It only takes less than four or five minutes. I don't understand why it can't be done. So I'm asking.
Well, the reason I do it is because the, the developers are not what I'm asking and they don't have to come for. The, the public comment that they can wait and then yet they would still be there when we do the prayer pledge in fact of the day. So it's, it's for our, our staff, they don't have to be there, uh, if they don't have uh, issues until their item comes up. So it's, it's more of a, you know, getting people in the right spot at the right time.
But the invocation and pledge is less than three minutes.
Right, I understand. So if they come in late, if they come in later, then they, they miss the prayer and pledge. So that's my, that's my point.
I know, um. But the residents are asking.
Okay.
And they keep asking and it's been asked on the dais. Today I, I heard it, I think three times. They're asking why we are not uh, doing the invocation and pledge. So I'm putting it out there. I'm asking respectfully if you could consider bringing it back. So this way. We as individual commissioners have our constituents that trust us, call us and say, do you think you can address that? Or coming up on public comment and having them ask for it. And we just pretend that no one's asking for it and they are asking for it. So I'm respectfully asking you as the mayor and the chair to please consider bringing back the invocation and pledge before public comment. So I'll leave it at that. Errol Estate did send us an email, uh, the fifth hole from there. Asking us as the city to buy the uh, they're, they're offering us their defunct. Now I did send an email to. Uh, our chief administrator and he responded saying that we did not.
We, you got the same email at the same time as I did. I.
No, I know that, but when I asked him, was the mayor considering it? The response I got that at this time, he did not know that we were considering it. He just said, right. But now recently at the Rock Springs Ridge. Uh, HOA meeting, which was very recent. Uh, the HOA president stood before the membership and said that he had met with you and you did, and I saw that in the Apopka Voice. You said you met with not just the HOA president, but you met with the golf group. But there was no indication. Uh, the HOA president said that you would entertain it, that you were supported for the seven million dollar bond. But when the Apopka Voice asked you, there was not a clear answer. So the, the question is, are we entertaining that?
We, we haven't, until we have something to look at, we, we can't entertain anything. I mean, we, we want to help Rock Springs Ridge. We want to help, help the Errol residents in any way possible. But I'm not going to, I'm not going to risk the financial stability of the city to do it, or I'm not. So it's, it's, it, we'll see where it goes. I, I don't know.
Those are both private golf courses, defunct. And I, I feel, and I wrote that on Facebook and I wrote that on Nextdoor Neighbor. I know that they shared it. That I feel that it is a private matter that should be handled between the HOA. Uh, the golf group and the membership of the community. That I strongly believe.
I, I, I agree.
Because we've had past history.
Sure.
Um, where things didn't go right and there was a miscommunication where um, both Rock Springs Ridge and Errol Estate. Were uh, their, their residents believed that we were going to be this middle brokerage to.
I mean.
Kind of negotiate.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say they're any different than what we did for Emerson Park. I mean, different, different um. Um, funding, but it, it's, you know, we, we want to help, we wanted to help Emerson Park. So we helped them with the process. We helped them, you know, we shepherded through the process. So if we can help Rock Springs Ridge, if we can help Errol shepherd something through the process. I think we would all be, I think we'd all say that that's something we'd like to do. What that looks like, I don't know. We haven't, you know, I don't, I haven't seen it. Uh, we know when, when we, we got the Emerson Park to a point where it came forward, we knew exactly what they were going to get. What we were going to get and what it was going, you know, who was going, who was responsible for what.
Yeah, but now with Emerson State, when we did our current budget, we can't do any. Am, am I mistaken uh, with the finance? We as the city cannot. Go out for a bond or borrow money because we did this for Emerson.
There is a, the Emerson, oh, I'm sorry, the Emerson Park loan was. Consider, basically when it was filed, it was filed in where we didn't have to track arbitrage on that. So there's a limit of how much debt you could issue that would be exempt from that requirement. And that's the five million. We can still continue to borrow money. So let me clarify that. Okay, it's just that limit. So if we borrowed more money in this calendar year, that may change that position for them. And then I'd have to track the arbitrage situation if one exists, but I don't foresee it. Because the money will even, won't even be in the bank loan. Okay?
So those are my two concerns is that I know that we all received a letter from Errol.
Sure.
But we did, I didn't get a response where, no, the mayor is not making, is not working on a, on helping Errol. And certainly Rock Springs Ridge, the HOA president stood before its membership. And it was the night that we had a budget uh, workshop here. So I was not in attendance. But as soon as I got home, as late as I got home, um, I did get, you know, information saying that. Uh, the HOA president stood before the membership and said that he had had a meeting with you and that you were on board. And I thought, here we go again with all this with Rock Springs Ridge.
We want to help them any way we can. I mean.
Well, how would we help them?
I, I don't know.
It's a private, it's a private, it's a private golf course. Um, and. It should be between the membership, the homeowners. The HOA and the golf group. We, we don't benefit. There's none of the city, the city does not benefit from only Rock Springs Ridge Golf.
I agree.
Okay.
Anything else, Commissioner Velazquez?
That's it.
Commissioner Anderson?
Uh, yes, so two things and I probably need the HR director and can you, because we kind of discussed this already. So this is in regards to the, a nineteen ninety-three ordinance in regards to compensation. Section two point zero three also spoke with the attorney about this as well. And I think the attorney probably needs to kind of weigh in on this as well. So the last time that. The policy has been updated was nineteen ninety-three. So I think it's important that we look at um, updating um, that policy in regards to um, the compensation um, for expenses for the council. Uh, when I asked um, how our salary was determined, um, there was no document or anything um, that they could actually provide. Um, the latest document was from nineteen ninety-three signed by our previous mayor, John Lynn. So we are operating off a, a document over thirty years old. So I think it's important that we move to um, update this um, ordinance.
That, that's fine, Commissioner. That's up to the. To the dais up there to do that. So if, if you all.
I asked for it.
I did do a survey, um. Uh, actually Lady, uh, Lake Mary did a survey of all the commissioners within the area and I updated it today. Uh, sent it to Bradley. So we're looking at all that right now. I can forward it to you if you'd like. Uh, into the mayor, but.
Sure.
It, it basically uh, everybody's different. It's what it comes down to. There's no set. Um, requirement for, for any uh, commission, how they get paid. So you have one that may uh, have a base amount and then they get uh, increased by. One, I think is the amount of the employees get. Uh, another one is by the uh, CPI, Consumer Price Index. So it's, it varies.
So it's important that we actually have something. Right now we have absolutely nothing, however.
We have nothing right now, yeah.
So why don't we bring that back, Commissioner Anderson, at next council meeting, do a presentation on that? Does that, does that work for you?
Yes, so next.
Yeah.
Could do that.
Through public records or through HR?
I asked.
Can you send it to the rest of the commissioners?
I requested.
Commissioner, we'll, we'll send you the updated, all the information we've gotten to date.
The one from nineteen ninety-three.
Oh, yes, the, the.
Yeah, the original ordinance.
Oh, the original ordinance.
So there hasn't been an ordinance that they can find since then. So that was the.
I believe Susan found, did some research on that and found it, right?
Uh, we, basically the um, ordinance was, um. No, we all, it was a long.
Yeah, yeah.
I can't find it.
Okay, we were all looking.
Yeah, we'll bring it back in two, two weeks.
Yep, okay.
In addition to that, also from understanding, I've received um, just some concerns from staff in regards to a po- the PRR, the policy rules and regulation. From my understanding, that hasn't been updated since two thousand and eleven.
We are working on that.
As well.
Yes, we are working on that. We're rewriting it.
Okay.
Putting it into a, a, a newer format, hopefully easier to find things.
Would that be part of like the employee survey that you were conducting as well or?
No, this is different.
It's going to be separate.
It's right, it's personnel rules and regulations. So they're pretty much set in stone. We're just uh, rewriting it. Uh, and we'll bring it to you, uh, which has never been done before. So as far as we could tell. Uh, it's never been brought before the commissioners um, before, but. Uh, once we get it finished, then we will bring it before you and show you the different changes. Um, you know, what was done. Uh, to change it, so on and so forth. So. There are some obsolete things in there.
When can we expect, or what, what do you expect that to be done?
Uh, I can check with Bradley. We can work with Bradley and give you a, a, a date, hopefully.
Anything else, Commissioner Anderson?
That's all. Thanks.
Cool, okay. All right. Who we got next? Cliff, you want to go next?
Absolutely can. Um, we, we, there's nothing we would like better to do than at eleven PM start talking about SB one eighty. And yet here we are. Um, so you have been given this uh, summary prepared by the Florida League of City, Cities. And you will note that it's titled, Emergency Preparedness and Response SB one eighty. Um, this is legislative speak for a little bit of stuff about emergency preparedness and for, for cities. A lot of stuff about what you can't do anymore. Um, and that's the problem with the current state of Tallahassee. I'll stop my soapbox now. But I will tell you that the biggest concerns are also what you're seeing in the front page news of the Orlando Sentinel over the last couple of days. Because the impacts on development and our ability to control development are monumental. Um, as I have highlighted in my version, uh, I'm going to focus on those because there's many little things. As an example, there's something that says that uh, when a local government may not adopt and, or enforce an ordinance for substantial improvements. Or repairs to a structure which includes a cumulative substantial improvement period. Which means you can't tell them how fast they got to get it done. Uh, and, and things of that nature. So there's a lot of little that, sort of what I would call uh, jabs. But then there's some knockout punches when it comes to development uh, that are, are really significant. And those uh, deal with what we can and cannot do on a go-forward basis. Now first, what you need to understand is we are as well as very many, maybe most if not all counties are impacted. By this portion of the bill uh, at lines thirteen twenty-one through thirteen seventy-three. Which talks about restrictions in counties where a disaster was uh, uh, declared. Based on hurricanes Debbie, Helene or Milton. So if you're in a county that was uh, in a declared emergency uh, disaster area, based on those hurricanes, then this applies to you. Retroactively, all the way to August twenty twenty-four. So. It says among other things that you cannot uh, uh, adopt. You are prohibited from proposing or adopting, proposing or adopting, considering, let's just use the right language. A mor- a moratorium on construction, reconstruction or redevelopment. Of any property damaged by such hurricanes. A, and this is the one that's Orange County struggling with, a more restrictive or burdensome amendment to its comprehensive plan or land use development regulations. And or a more restrictive or burdensome procedure concerning review, approval. Or issuance of a site plan, development permit or development order. So summarize, what that means is that if you do anything to make it take longer than it's, than it ordinarily does. To slow the process, to prohibit the permits because of a moratorium while you study and issue, all of things which would have been legal to do. because of a moratorium while you study and issue, all of things which would have been legal to do previous to this bill, you are in violation of this bill. What happens is the liar, a- as has happened in the city of, uh in the county of Orange, sends you a fourteen-day notice. And if you don't rescind the action that is causing the violation of the bill, then you're on the hook for attorney's fees and costs and potential damages and other things. It isn't good. And so if you've been paying attention to what happens at the county, you know they set up and passed by a huge margin. Seventy-three percent of the voters voted for the rural boundary amendment to protect rural boundaries. Frankly, as a city, we weren't all that knocked out about it because we had a JPA that says we should be allowed to annex certain properties and have had that agreement contractually binding both parties for a long time. Many cities were opposed to it, but the residents passed it en masse, seventy-three percent. The threatened uh litigation from ranchers and farmers and large landowners like Deseret Ranch, if you're familiar with those guys, uh said, look, uh we now think that we're protected by SB one eighty. And if you don't rescind application of this charter amendment, charter amendment, not something that the government did, but the people did. Um we're going to sue you as a violation of one eighty because it makes all of our abilities to develop much more burdensome and difficult, and the bill says you can't do that. And so that is the issue that is currently going on today. Today, the county decided, after initially telling the developer's lawyer, uh yeah, we're probably gonna have to fold because we can read it just as well as you can. But today, pursuant to a lot of political pressure, they said, we're gonna take a stand and fight it. It'll be interesting to see how it comes out. It, I I actually think that they have at least an arguable case. I don't know how well it'll go, but they have something to say because it's a charter amendment as opposed to regulation that the government imposed. But having said all of that, um it is a real problem. So when when someone suggests we need to do a moratorium, and and if the answer is, well, we can't do it now. Well, you should have done it. Now you're way behind April. Well, if you, unless you were to do it before June uh uh of twenty twenty-four, I think it was, I'm looking for the actual date.
August one.
August one, twenty twenty-four. Um then it it would go back and bite you now. They would say you gotta take it off or else. And so this is one of many examples you've heard me cite over time of how folks in Tallahassee say they're in favor of local control until they get to Tallahassee and then they kinda forget that whole thing. Um I don't like it. I'm not sure that my opinion matters. I don't, I I think it's bad planning. I think you cannot say that every city is the same. You can't say that Naples is the same as Apopka or is the same as Oviedo because we all have different things we're looking out for and trying to protect and control and all of those other things. But the legislature knows best, according to the legislature, and this is what they've done. And so I can't fix it. I can't do anything about it. I do think it's going to be challenged, just like it's being challenged according to a vote that was taken today in um in Orange County. Uh but I don't know how it's gonna come out. We don't have any attorney's general opinions yet because it's too new. The governor just signed it, um you know, a week or two ago. And so don't know, but it it should answer for those who are concerned about, we need to slow or stop growth. Tell it to Tallahassee. In fact, I think Mr. Demings had the best quote in the article that was published today when he said, be mad at the right people. Call the folks in Tallahassee, and I think that's accurate advice.
All right. Thank you, Cliff. Anything else? Is that good? All right, Bradley.
Only thing I had was uh already covered by Commissioner Anderson, just an update that staff, we're still working on the commissioner salaries uh review. And we'll bring back an item next meeting.
All right. Bob, you got me queued up. Just I'll start off with this and then we'll get in the good stuff, good stuff.
I'll apologize ahead of time if there's any ads that might. YouTube's kinda known for ads.
What, what now?
YouTube's kind of known for ads.
Anyhow, am I recording them correctly? If I had a nickel for every time I got asked about meeting minutes, I would be a very rich woman. But let's take a step backwards and simplify things just a bit. Why do we hold meetings in the first place? Correct, to get business done. And that's exactly what you need to record in the meeting minutes. The details of the business that got taken care of in the meeting. You need to remember that they're minutes, not seconds. And what you record in the minutes should be a record of what was done in the meeting, not everything that was said by every single board member. In this video, I'm going to quickly go over a few important minutes, do's and don'ts for all you recording secretaries. For a more complete list of meeting minutes, do's and don'ts, please check the description below. Do number one, do use the agenda as a guide. Your meeting agenda and your meeting minutes, they work in tandem. As you move through each item on the agenda, make certain that you record what action was taken for each item of business. Your meeting minutes will also support the creation of your next meeting agenda. Do number two, do enter the exact wording of the motions as finally adopted. Your meeting minutes are not just a historical record of the business that has taken place during the meeting. They are also the legal record. So it is essential that the recording secretary makes certain to properly record the motion that is passed or not in its entirety. Do number three, do record all counted votes for and against. Listing the type of vote is really important. For example, if the motion passed via majority vote or the motion passed with six in the affirmative and two in the opposition. Remember that abstentions do not count as any type of vote unless your organization's bylaws state something different. Now, let's quickly go over a couple of meeting minutes don'ts. Don't number one, don't include the opinions or content from debate. As the recording secretary, you are not a court stenographer who needs to list all of the opinions and comments of your board members. Your job is to capture clearly the actions that were taken during the meeting. Individual comments and opinions are not relevant to the business decisions that your board eventually takes. So don't include them. Don't, number two, don't waste too much time approving your minutes. Nobody wants to waste time in your meetings and your board members really shouldn't be spending a ton of time approving the minutes from your last meeting. This process should move quickly and effortlessly for the most part. Remember, you don't need to make a formal amendment for grammatical errors. These can be changed at any time. When I sit in meetings where the board members take too much time to approve the minutes, this could be an indicator that your board could use some board training. Now listen up, all you recording secretaries. You know your meeting minutes are the legal record of the decisions and the work of your board. So you know that the work that you're doing to keep accurate minutes is incredibly important. And to drive home how important this work is, I want you to show up in your meetings thinking of yourself as a gladiator.
Those about to die salute you.
Yes, that's right. I want you to see yourself as a bold gladiator in the arena of your meetings, fighting to keep the information specific and understandable. So what do I mean by that? Well, if you're the recording secretary and you're lost and you don't know what the motion is on the floor, then you're not the only one who's lost. You need to boldly unsheath your sword or raise your pen and bravely raise your hand and ask the presiding officer to clarify the motion. It is your job to fight for clarity and understanding in your board meetings. You need to show up for your meetings feeling empowered and confident so that you can cut through any clutter and capture the business and important details that need to be included in the minutes. Meeting minutes do not need to be complicated, and neither does Robert's Rules of Order. If you enjoyed this video, please make sure that you subscribe so that you don't miss any of my upcoming videos. And for all of your Robert's Rules of Order training and board development needs, please visit my website, robertsrulesmadesimple.com. Thank you so much. My name is Susan Leahy and happy meetings.
All right, thank you. So Susan, I think you made all the do's and you didn't do any of the don'ts. So I appreciate what you do as far as keeping our minutes.
So you're advocating for a new policy for that?
No, this is my.
Are you gonna be doing Robert Tools of Order? I mean, what was the point of that?
Okay.
We're not following that. You guys are doing verbatim of some things, not verbatim of the others.
Commissioner Ness, it's not your turn.
So you just don't want any type of
It's not your turn. You wanna.
Rules and regulations and any of that. So it's just so that you don't properly uh apply it.
Shut up.
Oh, so you're gonna apply decorum now and tell me to shut up?
Yeah, I, you you'd asked me not to play that video until you.
Decorum, so that's, so decorum, got it. So you can yell.
Okay, I said be quiet.
No, you said shut up.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, yeah, decorum.
Okay.
How are you gonna apply that equitably? I- i- it's insane to me. And you're clearly not doing it or able to do it.
Okay. All right, so let me just, I got some great news for everybody. Um on Friday, we we uh swore in thirteen new firefighters. And uh which, yeah, pretty cool. Two of them for US territories and two of them from foreign countries, which I thought was really cool. So anyway, it was really, really neat. Um Border Lake Update, everybody's got the the sheets. Uh it's not only got rainfall, but also the 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 lake elevations. I just, really great information. Need to thank Public Services, Vlad, and I mean Jeremy, and Michael, and Greg, everybody, the team that puts this this together, Da. Uh great information as to where the lakes are as far as meeting our, you know, the 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 levels of the lakes that we need to 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 do. Um and then last but not least, for sure, I am so excited. I'm pleased to report that the city of Apopka has been awarded seventeen point three million dollars through the US Department of Transportation's Better Utilizing Investments to Leverage Development called Build Grant Program for the Okowi Apopka Road Improvements. This is a significant achievement of our community and the results of dedicated work over the past several years. The city submitted a very detailed application which included the following criteria: safety, environmental, sustainability, quality of life, mobility and community, connectivity, economic competitiveness, partnership and collaboration, innovation and project readiness. The application for the previous grant, formerly known as the Raise Grant, was was led by our own Pam Richmond, whose leadership and coordination were instrumental in strengthening the proposal. Last year, the city partnered with Kimley Horn and Associates to provide us with the technical assistance and strategic insight to put together such a compelling grant proposal. And we have with us tonight Evan Gagley from Kimley Horn. Appreciate you staying, hanging in here with us, so appreciate you coming out. Although we are deficient in a couple of areas from last year's grant, our team led the, led this year by our own Gene Sanchez and Kimley Horn team made a few adjustments to help raise our score, which ultimately gave us a winning total. The awarded funds will support the Okowi Apopka Complete Streets and Trail Project, which will enhance safety, improve multimodal connectivity and support sustainable growth in the southwest quadrant of Apopka. Improvements with this project include expanding the roadway from two to four lanes, adding bike lanes, a multi-use path, accessibility features such as smart lighting, sensors and ADA compliant enhancements. I'd like to thank everyone that had a part of this, Public Services, Community Development, and Kimley Horn for all that you've done to get us to this point. And also uh our Congressman Dan Webster for being our shepherd and getting this through the congressional appropriation. So thanks, everybody, and have a great night.